Ready to see the...
Good evening, Ms. Penny Carter.
Good evening.
Hi, so did you make the announcement to silence all of their phones and any computers so that the sound will not come through during the meeting to the public?
No ma'am, I didn't.
Oh, why is?
I won't.
Why am I getting the feedback?
It says he's there.
Can you make the announcement?
Yes, I don't have a problem with that.
Okay.
Ladies and gentlemen, if you could please silence your phones and any devices that might interrupt in the meeting until we get to the public portion of our meeting. Thank you.
It is now officially 5:30?
Ladies and gentlemen, this meeting is being called to order. Adequate notice of the meeting has been given in accordance with the Open Public Meetings Act pursuant to Public Laws 1975, Chapter 231. This agenda is complete to the extent known and was sent to the Trenton Times, posted on the First floor bulletin board in the City Hall, filed in the City Clerk's office, and posted on the City of Trenton's website. Formal action will be taken. Ms. Penny Carter, can you please put the agenda on the screen?
Okay. I'm not... Just give me a minute.
Alrighty.
Will we do roll call?
Yes, please.
Councilwoman Caldwell-Wilson?
Present.
Councilman Harrison? I know he's present, I've seen. Councilman Michelle?
Right, Councilman Harrison, present.
Councilman Rodriguez? Councilman Rodriguez. Councilwoman Vaughn? Councilwoman Vaughn. Councilwoman Wilkins?
Present.
Council President McBride?
Present.
You have a quorum.
Thank you.
Council President?
Yes, go right ahead, Councilwoman.
Yeah, can we have a public comment on the docket before we vote?
Well, first, I would like to get through the invocation, and I would also like to get through the flag salute.
I'm going to apologize, I do not have neither the invocation nor a flag.
So, you know, we could just cite the Pledge of Allegiance?
Okay. "I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and then to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all."
And we could have a silent prayer. We could do a moment of silence for the prayer. Alright, we may continue. Ms. Penny Carter.
Okay, under new business resolutions, Office of the City Clerk, Resolution 22-122, a resolution urging Congress to review and revise all laws relating to the regulation of social media. I need a motion to approve.
Council President, I asked if we could have a public comment on the docket before we vote?
Yes, well, Ms. Penny Carter, Mr. Rodriguez is not... He hasn't joined the meeting yet. I believe this is his resolution.
Yes, it is.
So, we can pull that. The councilwoman want to put a motion to the floor, we'll take it to the vote. I didn't... Me, I don't see where we should have public comment this evening. We've had a lengthy conversation where the animal shelter was concerned, and I think that the comments should come during the comment session. But she has a motion on the floor.
Second.
Councilwoman Caldwell-Wilson?
Yes.
Councilman Harrison?
Yes.
Councilman Shaw?
Yes.
Councilman Harrison?
Yes.
Councilman Rodriguez? Councilwoman Vaughn? Absent. Councilwoman Wilkins?
No.
And Councilwoman... Council President McBride?
No.
You have three yeses, two abstentions, and two noes.
And the presiding officer did not move the motion. I said that it shouldn't come to the floor, she would need five votes or a supermajority, at least four in this instance, so the motion has failed. Yes. So, we will continue with the docket. Ms. Penny Carter?
Yes ma'am.
I'm going to put myself on silence, and I'm going to try to make sure that Councilman Rodriguez has the right link, and also Councilwoman Vaughn, because we just sent the link about four minutes or five minutes ago, so let me just double check to make sure that they have this link.
Okay, so we're going to take a recess until you come back?
Yes, I'm gonna just put myself on mute, and I'm going to reach out to Councilman Santiago Rodriguez, and to Councilwoman Vaughn to make sure that they have the right link.
Okay.
Alrighty.
They're trying to find...
Councilwoman Caldwell-Wilson?
Yes?
Yeah, I was on another link that was on Outlook, and I did notice the Councilman Rodriguez, as well as Wally Onatiri, were on that site as well.
Okay, so someone has to contact Wally, the council president is trying to contact Mr. Rodriguez.
Alright.
Thank you.
Yep. Wally, I hear you're on the wrong link.
Excuse me, to the public and to the council, they did have the wrong link. I resent the correct link, they should be joining us shortly.
Thank you.
Is Mr. Colosi on the line? Does he have the right?
Yes, he is.
Okay.
I'm on, Council President.
Alrighty.
Council President, I'm here too.
What's going on, Mr. Bridges? We're having a problem. I sent it to both Mr. Rodriguez's emails, but he doesn't have it. Can Mr. Rivera try to send it out to Councilman Rodriguez and Councilwoman Vaughn? Because he said he's not getting it, and I sent it twice. Mr. Bridges, is there a way to contact Mr. Rivera? Mr. Cruz?
Council President, I just sent it. Council President, this is Mr. Rivera, I just sent it to both Councilman Rodriguez and Ms. Councilwoman...
I got it now.
Okay, thank you.
Did they change the link?
Well, they just sent this one out to us at 5:25, so...
Oh, gosh, we'll change it.
Alrighty, so is Councilwoman Vaughn receive hers? It didn't push back, because it never came back on my phone as a failure. Failure to deliver.
Madam President, if individuals still have trouble, or you hear future trouble, the link on the city's website will direct them to the appropriate place.
Okay. Alrighty, Ms. Penny Carter, you may go back to Councilman Rodriguez's resolution. He's here now.
Okay, before we do that, I'd like to say the council is reconvening at 5:41 PM. Still a majority in attendance. Resolution 22-122, "Resolution Urging Congress to Review and Revise All Laws Relating to the Regulation of Social Media." May I have a motion?
Well, I motion it. I'll second it.
Councilwoman Caldwell-Wilson?
No.
Councilman Harrison?
No.
Councilman Michelle?
No.
Councilman Rodriguez?
Yes.
Councilwoman Vaughn?
Yes.
Councilwoman Wilkins?
Yes.
Council President McBride?
Yes.
So, pass for this ring?
Alright, Ms. Penny, I wanted to read this into the record, it's a little housekeeping item, but we... Two of the council members hadn't signed on yet, and would you note that Councilwoman Vaughn has arrived from the meeting?
Yes, I did. I did that.
Alright.
Post G and Councilman Rodriguez.
Great, I would like to just read this into the record. I would like to just bring a matter to the attention of the council. Members of this governing body have been disrespectful to each other. It is perfectly within our rights to debate and even criticize any issue they see fit. However, there is a line which should not be crossed when addressing an issue. In our city code, under rules of council, it's called decorum. Council members must preserve order and decorum to recognize the presiding officer. I am urging council, including myself, to take a step back when an issue becomes contentious. Let us reflect and think about our constituents. The constituents that we are here to represent in the best light possible. I thank you all, and I just wanted to read that into the record and ask my colleagues to adhere to it alone with myself, not excluding myself. Ms. Penny Carter, you may continue.
Yes ma'am. Resolution 22-99, "A Resolution Authorizing the City of Trenton's Calendar Year 2022 Budget to be Read by Title Only."
Okay.
Council President?
Go right ahead, Council.
Yeah. Mr. Cruz, did we get the revised resolution to accept the introduced budget, not to approve it?
Yes, Madam President, I'm sorry, can I speak?
Yes, go right ahead, Mr. Cruz.
Alright, thank you, and I apologize for jumping in. Yes, it was sent Wednesday morning, I believe, to the Clerk's office.
Okay, thank you. Ms. Carter, could you read the resolution as amended?
You want me to read the whole resolution?
No, well, the resolution is just... No, just the...
Resolution authorizing the City of Trenton's calendar year 2022 budget to be read by title only, whereas NJSA 40A:4-8 sets forth that the budget may be read by title only at the time of the public hearing, if a resolution is passed.
Ms. Penny Carter?
Yes ma'am.
That's not the one that she's speaking... That's not what she's speaking to, she's speaking to 22-98, so when you get to 22-98, can you read that one, the title of that into the record? Because the old title says "approved" instead of "introduced."
Okay.
I believe that was the...
Because I don't have the numbers on my resolution.
So, this one, Councilwoman, is 22-99, just the resolution authorizing the calendar year to be read by the title only, and the next one is the resolution that should have had the amendment, which is 2298.
Thank you.
Okay, do we have a motion on 22-99?
Yes, I said to move, I take the motion. It's Councilwoman Wilkins.
Thank you. Who's seconding it?
I'll second it.
Thank you. Councilwoman Caldwell-Wilson?
Yes.
Councilman Harrison?
Yes.
Councilman Michelle?
Yes.
Councilman Rodriguez?
Yes.
Councilwoman Vaughn?
Yes.
Councilwoman Wilkins?
Yes.
Council President McBride?
Yes.
Carried by unanimous vote. 22-98, "Resolution to Introduce the Budget for Calendar Year 2022."
Don't move.
Second.
Councilwoman Caldwell-Wilson?
Yes.
Councilman Harrison?
Yes.
Councilman Michelle?
Yes.
Councilman Rodriguez?
Yes.
Councilwoman Vaughn?
Yes.
Councilwoman Wilkins?
Yes.
Council President McBride?
Yes.
Carried by unanimous vote. Resolution 22-100, "Resolution Exercising the Option..." Oh, this is a consent. "...to extend the contract for an additional one year awarded to Board &amp; Perlman Insurance Agency, Inc., for broker insurance services from March 18, 2022 to September 3, 2022, in an amount not to exceed a flat fee per year of $75,000 per year, under Contract 2020-04."
Ms. Penny Carter?
Yes ma'am.
All of the consents, they go together.
Okay.
If that was a part of the consent agenda?
Yes.
They all go together.
Okay, so it should be 2022-100. 2022, I mean, 22... 22-106. 22-107. Let's see. 22-117. 22-118. 22-119. 22-121 are all consent resolutions. Can I have a motion to adopt the consent agenda?
Don't move.
Second? Second. Okay. Councilwoman Caldwell-Wilson?
Yes.
Councilman Harrison?
Yes.
Councilman Michelle?
Yes.
Councilman Rodriguez?
Yes.
Councilwoman Vaughn?
Yes.
Councilwoman Wilkins?
Yes.
Council President McBride?
Yes.
They're carried by unanimous vote. Resolution 22-101, "A Resolution Adopting a Cash Management Plan for the Deposit and Investment of Public Funds of the City of Trenton."
Don't move.
Second.
Councilwoman Caldwell-Wilson?
Yes.
Councilman Harrison?
Yes.
Councilman Michelle?
Yes.
Councilman Rodriguez?
Yes.
Councilwoman Vaughn?
Yes.
Councilwoman Wilkins?
Yes.
Council President McBride?
Yes.
Carried by unanimous vote. "Resolution 22-102, 'A Resolution Authorizing Emergency Appropriations to the CY 2022 Temporary Parking Utility Budget of the City of Trenton, $200,000.'" May I have a motion, please?
Don't move.
Who's seconding it?
Second.
Council President, can we have the...
Yes, go right ahead. Yeah, you can speak to it.
Is Mr. Cruz around? Is he on the line, Mr. Cruz?
Yes, I... Yes, I am.
So, why do we have an emergency appropriation to the temporary parking utility? Parking utility means a street parking, correct?
That is correct, yes, Madam President.
Yeah, so that's the street park, I just wanted, just for the record, just to clear, make it clear for folks who are listening, this is for the parking that is facilitated by the kiosk, correct?
Yes, and the parking, the parking, if you want to call them enforcement officers, because it's also for salaries and wages. So, what happens is, Madam President, that when we did the emergency appropriation for all of the city, at the special meeting a couple of weeks back, we actually had the parking utility on a separate page of the document, and when we processed the document, it didn't make it with all of the others. So, it should have been citywide, water, sewer, and parking. So, this is part of that. Now that every time that we don't have an introduced budget, we have to do an emergency appropriation, not that... It's not that they need money, yes, they need the money, but this is how we appropriate the funding to continue operating until we have an adopted budget.
Councilwoman Vaughn, are you finished with your questioning?
Yes, yes, yes ma'am.
Okay, thank you.
Alrighty, we may continue with the vote, Ms. Penny Carter.
Councilwoman Caldwell-Wilson?
Yes.
Councilman Harrison?
Yes.
Councilman Michelle?
Yes.
Councilman Rodriguez?
Yes.
Councilwoman Vaughn?
Yes.
Councilwoman Wilkins?
Yes.
Council President McBride?
Yes.
Carried by unanimous vote. "22-103, 'A Resolution Authorizing the Settlement of a Civil Action in the Matter of Brian Montgomery versus the City of Trenton in the Amount of $85,000.'" I need a motion?
Don't move.
Second. Second.
Councilwoman Caldwell-Wilson?
Yes.
Councilman Harrison?
Yes.
Councilman Michelle?
Yes.
Councilman Rodriguez?
Yes.
Councilwoman Vaughn?
Yes.
Councilwoman Wilkins?
Yes.
Council President McBride?
Yes.
Carried by unanimous vote. "Resolution 22-104, 'A Resolution Authorizing the Award of a Contract with the Law Office of Eric M. Bernstein and Associates, LLC to Provide Professional Legal Services Regarding Insurance Litigation and Insurance Matters Through a Fair and Open Process in accordance with NJSA 19:44A-20.5 at SEC for a period of one year from January 1, 2022 to December 31, 2022, in an amount not to exceed $100,000, under an RFP 2021-57, to be tabled to April till today's meeting." It's to be tabled to the, uh, April till today's meeting. I think it's supposed to be tabled to the nineteenth.
This has to be voted on to be tabled.
Okay.
Um, Ms. Penny, who wants it tabled? You have to, you have to know who wanted it tabled, and you have to have the reason that they're tabling, and then when they, when they want to bring it back.
Okay, that came from the um April fifth meeting. And I don't, I don't remember who, I didn't write, I mean, I don't have those notes with me to know who it was that asked that it be tabled.
Council President, I made, that was a, that was a motion that was going to be brought by Councilman, uh, Rodri- uh, Rodriguez.
Thank you.
Mister, Mister Rod- Mister Rodriguez, have you been satisfied with your answer, or do you still want to move to table this resolution? Do you want to move to table it?
That's the same one, uh, that they're claiming that have unfinished contracts, and they're sort of taking all the contracts. If that's the one, I want it to be tabled.
You want to table it?
So, what do you mean?
Table it indefinitely.
Wha- what information did you want, Councilman?
That is, that's the same one, but we, we voted against it. We voted it down already. Uh, with a different, uh, number.
Council President?
We voted it down, that was it. And I, I, I am talking now, I don't believe that, that I, uh, ask anybody to talk.
I, I, I don't need you to ask me to talk. I'm asking Council President to maybe respond to your concern.
Uh, Council President? There's a motion on the floor, Mr. uh Bridges, and the motion must be heard before we go any further. Ms. Penny Carter?
Is there a second to the motion?
Uh, second.
Councilwoman Caldwell-Wilson? This is a motion to table indefinitely.
I thought Mr. Bridges was going to speak on that before we take, take the vote.
No, once the motion has been, Councilwoman, once the motion has been, uh, moved, it, it has to be acted upon.
Well, alright, yes. Councilman Harrison?
No.
Councilman Michelle?
No.
Councilman Rodriguez?
Yes.
Councilwoman Vaughn?
Yes.
Councilwoman Wilkins?
Yes.
Council President McBride?
No.
It looked like it was carried, let me see, one, two, three, four to, four to three, it looks like it was carried.
Yes, so it will, it's, it's tabled indefinitely.
Ca- Council President, can I, how can I be heard on this? Because the reasons for its tabling is, is, is not accurate, and I think the council at least owes the benefit of knowing what they're voting on, because the reason that's been given by Mr. um Rodriguez is simply wrong.
I'm not changing my vote.
Mister, Mister Bridges?
Mister Rodriguez is here.
Mister Bridges, um, once the vote has been cast, um, the, uh, the best thing for, um, you to do is basically, um,
RFP.
Do, uh, do an email, um, to, uh, Mister Rodriguez and, um, to the body, and, um, then we'll take it from there.
He already did.
Uh, okay, alrighty, thank you, thank you, Mister Bridges. Um, next, Ms. Penny Carter.
Twenty-two dash one oh-five, a resolution awarding a contract through a fair and open process in accordance with NJ SA nineteen colon forty-four A dash twenty point four at SEC awarded to Trenton Animal Rock for animal welfare services.
Can we move the screen up? Can we move the screen up so it could show on the screen? Mm-hmm, wait, and, okay, mm-hmm.
For a period of one year from April eighth, twenty-twenty-two to April seven, twenty-twenty-three, for the city of Trenton Department of Health and Human Services, Division of Trenton Humane Law Enforcement and Animal Services in an amount not to exceed three hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars under an RFP twenty-twenty-two dash oh-seven.
Don't move.
Second.
Uh, Council President? Hello, Council President?
Yes, go right ahead.
Are we having a debate on this, uh, resolution?
No, we need to just take it to the vote.
Okay.
We debated the other night. Let's take it to the vote.
Councilwoman Caldwell-Wilson?
Yes.
Councilman Harrison?
Yes.
Councilman Michelle?
Yes.
Councilman Rodriguez?
No.
Councilwoman Vaughn?
No.
Councilwoman Wilkins?
No.
Council President McBride?
No.
Failed four to three. Resolution twenty-two dash one oh-six, a resolution authorizing the filing of an application for the twenty-twenty-one recycling tonnage grant with New Jersey's Department of Environment. Oh, that was, I'm sorry, that was a consent. Yeah, those were consents. Uh, twenty-twenty-two dash one oh-eight, resolution awarding a contract through a fair and open process in accordance with NJ SA nineteen colon forty-four A dash twenty point four at SEC to Brown Field Redevelopment Solutions, Inc., for a period of one year from the time of award for environmental planning, grant management, and technical consulting and environmental protection, project management, Trenton Brown, Browns Field Program in an amount not to exceed one hundred thousand, six hundred and eighty dollars under an RFP twenty-twenty-one dash fifty-four.
Don't move.
Second.
Councilwoman Caldwell-Wilson?
Yes.
Councilman Harrison?
Yes.
Councilman Michelle?
Yes.
Councilman Rodriguez?
No.
Councilwoman Vaughn?
I, I, I'm sorry, um, Clerk Edwards Carter, is that one oh-seven or one oh-eight?
One oh-eight. I'm sorry, did I do the wrong thing? No, one oh-seven was a consent.
Oh, I'm sorry, very well. Oh, one oh-eight is a no.
Councilwoman Wilkins?
No.
Council President McBride?
No.
Failed four to three. Uh, resolution twenty-two dash one oh-nine, a resolution authorizing the city of Trenton Department of Housing and Economic Development to accept a home investment partnership American Rescue Plan Home A R P Grant um award in the amount of three million, two hundred and twenty-eight thousand, three hundred and twenty-four from the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development, HUD. I need a motion.
So move.
So move.
A second. Uh, Council President, I just want to, uh, say that I asked for this to be roll called because, uh, Mr. Daniels is going to send us a, um, a preliminary plan of sorts, um, and I haven't received that.
And she, I didn't hear her voice. Sorry, did you repeat that, Councilwoman Vaughn?
No, I didn't ask you. I said, I'm talking about, is that, who, who is that speaking?
I was asking you to, to finish your, or to repeat your statement, I didn't hear it.
I was stating that I didn't receive a plan from the director on this particular resolution that I requested on Tuesday.
Council President Maspe?
Uh, yes, you may, um, Mr. Daniels.
Okay, the couns- um, couns- through the Council President to Councilwoman Vaughn, there is no plan as of yet. The, the, the ultimate plan is to end homelessness and the city.
No, sorry, Mr. Council President, I didn't ask for that.
Yeah, ma'am, I, ma'am, I haven't.
Again, I, I asked for the plan, the preliminary plan for the, for the numbers. We all have any kind of grandstanding. I was very clear. You didn't do it. So, Council President, move on.
Council President, may I finish speaking?
Move on. You didn't submit the plan, sir. We don't want to hear a grandiose, save the world peace, world peace. You're not going to do that.
Grandstanding.
Okay, so I need.
Council President Maspe?
So let me, so let me be, so let me be clear. Um, Councilwoman Vaughn asked for some information. Um, Mr. um, Daniels, um, you didn't submit the information. Um, at this point, uh, we're just gonna, um, we know that this is a grant. Um, we need the grant, we're gonna go ahead and put this to the vote. So let us, um, we have the first, and we have the second, and we'll move on to the vote.
Councilwoman Caldwell-Wilson?
Yes.
Councilman Harrison?
Yes.
Councilman Michelle?
Yes.
Councilman Rodriguez?
Yes.
Councilwoman Vaughn?
No.
Councilwoman Wilkins?
Yes.
Council President McBride?
Yes.
Carried. Six to one. Uh, twenty-two dash one eleven, a resolution accepting a bid and awarding a contract to I B N Construction Corporation for construction services for the neighborhood redevelopment and revitalization pilot program for vacant properties on Sanford Street, Trenton, New Jersey, in an amount not to exceed five hundred and ninety-nine thousand, three hundred and thirty-one, thirty-one dollars per bid twenty-twenty-one dash sixty-six, and was asked to be tabled.
Yes, um, ca- um, Councilwoman, um, Wilkins, is this the resolution that you, um, wanted to speak to?
Yeah, um, I didn't ask to table it, but I received some information, um, when we received our email uh, from Mr. Bridges, uh, this after, uh, this morning. And I did a little more, um, research into the I B N Construction Corp. Uh, like, uh, previously stated by Councilwoman Vaughn, she made statement that, uh, the, the actual company is in Es- Essex County. It's in Newark, New Jersey. Uh, the issue that I have is I went, uh, actually to look up some information on I B N, and I B N is actually someone's home. The address, uh, I think it's forty, forty-something Herman? Forty-nine Herman Street is actually a, a, uh, a house. So, for that, I can't vote yes to this because it's not even actually a, a actual commercial property. I also went a little further to look up the actual company uh, to see if they were registered with Dun &amp; Bradstreet, you know, just to get some additional information, because sometimes it can be a situation where your, uh, location, your business, business, not actual physical location, but mailing location could be the home, but I didn't find anything on Dun &amp; Bradstreet either. So I find it very difficult to send five hundred and ninety-nine thousand dollars to Newark, New Jersey, to a house. So my vote will be no. Thank you.
Council President? Council President?
So, so go, go right ahead, and once Mr. Harrison makes his statement, we're gonna be moving. Who, let me ask, who asked for this to be tabled, or, um,
I, I, I did.
So do you want it to be tabled, or you want it to be voted on?
Uh, we can vote on it.
Alrighty.
I am.
After Mr. Harrison.
Because I appreciate.
Excuse me, after Mr. Harrison, Councilman Harrison makes his comments, then we'll move to a vote. Mr. Ha- Councilman Harrison, the floor is yours.
I, Mr. Daniels, can you ex- uh, go and elaborate more on this?
No, 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 I did not give.
No, no, no. You asked me if I got a question, I'm asking Mr. Daniels to elaborate.
Mr. Daniels, um, Mr. Daniels does not have the floor. If you have a comment to make, make your comment based on the resolution.
You asked me about a question, my question was to Mr. Daniels.
We're not allowing Mr. Daniels the floor, Mr. Harrison. Uh, uh, I'm quite sure you understand that I'm not yielding the floor to Mr. Daniels. We're gonna listen to your question, or we're gonna move to the vote. Ms. Penny Carter, can we move to the vote, please?
I need a motion and a second. So moved. That's Councilwoman Wilkins.
Have we voted to table this? No, we're voting it up or down.
Who, who seconded it?
I did. We have to move it along.
Okay. Councilwoman Caldwell-Wilson?
I can't vote on this because I, I haven't heard any response about, um, um, what Ms. uh, Wilkins had said about it being a private home. I would really like to know what the administration has to say about that.
So you're voting no? You're voting no?
Huh?
Uh, Councilman Harrison?
That's why I asked Mr. Daniels to elaborate, but the Council President didn't want me to, him to answer that question.
Councilman Harrison?
Yes, I'm over.
Councilman Michelle?
Yes.
Councilman Red- Rodriguez?
No.
Councilwoman Vaughn?
No.
Councilwoman Wilkins?
No.
Council President McBride?
No.
Failed. Uh, twenty-two dash one twenty-two, resolution accepting a bid and awarding a contract to P M Y Construction Corp. For demolition services at various locations throughout the city of Trenton for the neighborhood revitalization and rehabilitation pilot program in an amount not to exceed seven hundred and twenty-eight thousand, four hundred dollars per bid twenty-twenty-two dash oh-seven. I need a motion and a second, please.
Don't move.
Don't move.
Second.
Councilwoman Caldwell-Wilson?
Uh, Madam President? Yes, um.
Madam President, I, I think, uh.
Yes, go right ahead, Council, Council.
Twenty-two, one twenty. Yeah, one twenty-two now, right?
We're at twenty-two. But we're at twenty-two dash one.
Twenty-two dash one twelve.
Okay. Okay, uh, uh, Councilwoman, um, Councilwoman Wilkins?
Yes.
Are you going to expound on this resolution?
Well, with P M Y, uh, the situation with P M Y is P M Y is, uh, in Bergen County. Uh, they do, in fact, they do have a, uh, Dun &amp; Bradstreet number. Um, I did look the information up, but the only, uh, situation I, I, what I have with this is that we have other companies, uh, more local companies, uh, in the Mercer County area within our own borders that we can actually utilize to have this type of work done. Uh, and I understand, uh, this is the rehabilitation program, but these, uh, are particular homes that have been needing rehabilitation for quite some time. Uh, but I believe that we should, uh, actually be within our own borders, within Mercer County first, um, before we, you know, send our money to, uh, other counties.
Is this the, is this the resolution that you emailed me about the cost? About the thirty-one thousand dollars in the resolution coming up to two hundred and fifty thousand?
No, this was, no, no, this wasn't it, no, this. No, this one.
Okay, thank you. We may continue with the vote.
Ca- Council President, may I speak to that?
We may continue with the vote, please.
Councilwoman Caldwell-Wilson?
I already voted yes.
Councilman Harrison?
Yes.
Councilman Michelle?
Yes.
Councilman Rodriguez?
No.
Councilwoman Vaughn?
No.
Councilwoman Wilkins?
No.
Council President McBride?
No.
Failed four to three. Twenty-two dash one one-three is a resolution to approve a Trenton emergency loan in the amount not to exceed ten thousand dollars to the conservatory, NJ, L L. amount not to exceed ten thousand dollars to the Conservatory NJ LLC doing business as the Conservatory Mansion, and it was proposed to be tabled to the April nineteenth meeting.
Yes, that's to be tabled by Council President McBride, and the reason for the tabling is because this is a local Trenton business and under the American Rescue Act, we have money to infuse out into our community and I believe that we need to look deeper into this application because they originally asked for twenty thousand with the American Rescue money being on the table and we want to get this company, this, the Conservatory, as much as we can within the legal guidelines. And so I think Councilman Rodriguez put a amount there. If he did, I would like to hear it again because I don't have it on my notes, but I do remember that he had put a number out that we were looking for to see if we could get this, get the Conservatory. Councilman Rodriguez, was there a number?
But it, it was suggestion was that they asked for twenty thousand first and it was denied, but I believe we should give him at least fifty thousand dollars.
So we're gonna, we're gonna table this to see if the American Rescue Act and the UEZ funding both together can allot the Conservatory because it is a Trenton-based business doing things with the youth in the city of Trenton. So fifty thousand dollars is what we, we want to see if we could come up with for this, for this business. So it'll, this twenty-two dash one thirteen, I would like to table it to the next meeting in hopes that we move expeditiously to increase this amount with the American Rescue Funds.
Madam President? Madam President?
We may, we need to. Go right ahead.
They were low.
Who is, who is speaking?
To change to grant.
Okay, so Councilwoman.
In the city council room, see what's going on, see what they talking about.
Council President.
Yeah, I'm going to computer.
There's a lot of, there's a lot of background talking and they need to mute themselves. And Councilwoman Caldwell Wilson, you have the floor, but there was a lot of background talking.
No, okay, so I thought we decided on Tuesday that Mr. Daniels was not opposed to amending the resolution to increase it to twenty thousand, not fifty thousand, because that's what they asked for. I would need someone to clarify that for me.
Well, I had just, yes, I, I had just asked the Councilman because he had recommended the, 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 the increase. Council, Councilman Rodriguez? There, there, wait a minute. I'm, I'm asking anyone that is not a part of the body, the legislative body, to mute themselves. Mr. Rivera?
I'm trying. There's a couple of them.
Welcome, welcome.
Go right ahead, Councilman Rodriguez.
They also says a loan there. I want it to be changed to grant because supposedly those are grants, not loans. And they.
And, and.
First, first, I, it's strange that Councilwoman Mars Carver is opposing this because this is a great program right in her North Ward, right on East State Street, and I don't know if she have ever been there, but I've been there many times and they are, they are doing a great job for our children. Fifty thousand dollars is peanuts compared to what we are gonna give other organizations.
So, so we're gonna, we're gonna be asking for the fifty thousand and we're gonna take this to the vote now. Ms. Penny Carter, can we?
Council, Council President, may, may I say something?
Mr. Daniels, we're moving to the vote, sir. We'll have a conversation. We have two weeks to conversate.
Council President, I didn't get my question answered. I asked because I thought that we had agreed, I wrote it down, that we would increase it to twenty thousand because that's what the mansion requested. And no one answered that question.
The, 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 the answer to your question was that under the American Rescue Act, that the city has received thirty-six million and we should have plenty of money left over, whereas they do not even have to address this under the UEZ funding. They could address it under the American Rescue funding and bring it back in front of us with the fifty thousand dollar price tag on it.
But what if they don't need fifty thousand because they didn't request that? That's what I'm asking.
Well, we're gonna, we're gonna have two weeks to discuss. No, no, no. We're gonna have two weeks to discuss this with Mr. Daniels and, and, and we'll bring in the owners of the business to have this discussion. We will have a thorough discussion with the owners of this building.
Council President?
And then we'll be able to come back with the, with, with the information. We will circulate the information to all of the council before we put it back on the docket, but there will be conversations. This is in the North Ward, Councilwoman Caldwell Wilson, Mr. Daniels, myself, and the Conservator, Conservatory owners. We will all come to the table to discuss this, and now we need to move to the vote.
Council President? Council President?
We're moving to the vote.
Council President, we agreed on Tuesday to twenty thousand dollars.
Did not.
Yes, we did.
Ms. Penny Carter?
Yes.
We're moving to, we're moving to the vote.
Council? Councilwoman?
To table it until the, until the next meeting.
Councilwoman Caldwell Wilson?
Yes.
Councilman Harrison?
Yes.
Councilman Michelle?
Yes.
Councilman Rodriguez?
Yes.
Councilwoman Vaughn?
Yes.
Councilwoman Wilkins?
Yes.
Council President McBride?
Yes.
Carrie unanimously. Resolution twenty-two dash one one four, a resolution to approve a supplemental Trenton emergency loan in the amount not to exceed five thousand dollars to GK Enterprises LLC doing business as Whittaker Bar and Liquors.
Don't move.
Second.
Councilwoman Caldwell Wilson?
Yes.
Councilman Harrison?
Yes.
Councilman Michelle?
Yes.
Councilman Rod.
How this program gets rolled out, I'm gonna say no.
Councilwoman Wilkins?
Yes.
Council, Council President McBride?
Yes.
Carrie. Resolution two-two dash one one five, a resolution authorizing payment for a contract with Carroll Group Inc. awarded for demolition services in the city of Trenton for demolition and removal of a two-and-a-half-story brick structure due to fire, open roof areas and walls at the rear in a collapsed state located at one-twenty-nine Calhoun Street in the amount of forty thousand, four hundred and twenty dollars.
Council President, before we go on, can I ask the housekeeping item?
Yes.
I already missed it.
Oh, sorry.
Yes, it's good that you moved it. Councilman Harrison seconded.
Okay, no, I'll wait till the next. We can move on. We can continue with this and I'll break the next. If I can speak right after this, I, I appreciate it.
All right. The vote, Council, the vote, Ms. Penny Carter?
Councilwoman Caldwell Wilson?
Yes.
Councilman Harrison?
Yes.
Councilman Michelle?
Yes.
Councilman Rodriguez?
Yes.
Councilwoman Vaughn?
Uh, which one is this now? Oh, yes, yes, yes.
Councilwoman Wilkins?
Yes.
Council President McBride?
Yes.
Carrie by unanimous vote. Resolution twenty-two dash one one six, resolution amending the funding account for resolution twenty dash six four four.
President, can I speak before we move this particular?
Yes, I, yes, yes.
I just want to have a housekeeping, I just want to have a housekeeping item very quickly about the emergency five thousand loan. I, I would appreciate is, if, if we can get some information on our website to all the businesses here so they can understand that that money, that's the first time I seen this on this type of offering to the residents and business owners of the city. And if, I mean, I don't even know the process to even begin to help someone who would inquire about such an emergency funds. So I don't understand how this particular business got it and, and where they got the information from because there's nowhere on the website. And I would like if the administration can share that with the council before this night is before the meeting's over so we can get it out to the residents of the city that there is emergency funding available and which they can apply for in these small amounts. So you just can't, we just can't give it to one business and no offer it to the whole city. That's all I'm gonna say, thanks.
Councilwoman, this is under the UEZ funding, the Urban Enterprise Zone funding, and if like, Mr. Daniels, to send you some more information about the Urban Enterprise Zone, then they could do that.
No, 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 Council President, you misunderstood. I understand it comes out of the UEZ program, but within the UEZ program, there's different offering, and this is a particular offering, say, if I, I want to know if I was a business and I want to get a, a, an emergency loan, a short-term loan like that, I should be able to go to City Hall and get it and apply or go on their website and apply, but there's no mechanism to do that.
Thank you.
Council President?
Yes, yes, Councilman Harrison.
Mr. Daniels, how, how many loans have we've given out, five thousand dollar loans?
They range, but we've given out over COVID, some one hundred and twenty loans, I believe, over COVID. As, as a matter of fact, pursuant to resolution twenty dash one six nine, some two million dollars were appropriated by City Council, just for the program alone.
Thank you.
The question is.
Mr. Daniels, you under, you understood her question and she wants to make it, she wants to make this convenient for any business that needs assistance to be able to navigate through the City Hall to get the information they need to apply for the loans. It's not a hard, a, a task to do. As, as a matter of fact, it should be very easy for us to have it listed on our website, how, how to, how to a, a, apply for, for this, these loans. So with that, with that said, we'll move on to, for the vote of the, or move on to the next resolution.
It's twenty-two dash one one six, a resolution amending the funding account for resolution twenty dash six forty-four awarded to PAC Two LLC in the amount of one million, five hundred and fifty thousand dollars.
Councilwoman, did you get the information that you requested in reference to the bond and which some of this money was drawn down from and the other questions that you had asked the administration on Tuesday?
Uh, nope, got nothing. Zero.
Alrighty, we may, we may proceed with the vote.
And I just want to know, why, why didn't they send it? Council President, can I ask Mr. Cruz why, why we didn't, why was not, why wasn't the data sent?
I'll ask him.
Madam President?
Yes.
Yes, Madam President, I would have, I, I, I assume that the, what other department would have sent that information to you, Councilwoman? I, I don't, I, I, I don't know what to tell you. I, I, I don't have it, but it's the, the only, if, if the vote is, it's in the negative, all you're doing is just telling the city continue to take the money out of the operating funding, which means that it's putting an additional burden onto the operating funding. I mean, the contract has already been awarded and it's on, this is only a mechanism to be able to take the money from the capital and not the operating funding that we use for the daily operations of the department. But I, but I, but I thought we, I, I, I thought I explained it well on Tuesday.
All right.
But, but Councilwoman and Madam President, I mean, I, I will go back to the Tuesday record and see exactly what it was that Councilwoman requested and I will make sure that.
I remember this, yeah, okay, so the money is just being moved from one account to the other, or I get it, but I just, I just wanted to check or reconcile. I, I remember that this was part of a, this was funded by a bond that was issued and approved by the council.
Partial, yes.
Yeah, and I just wanted to understood, understand, you know, I, I mean, I'm, I'm still surprised to see that there's still funding left because the funding, I just wanted to see what the purpose of that bond was used for. Because again, we are issuing bonds and we finding that money is still not being drawn down and was not, is not being used expeditiously at the time that it was requested, and then you find out, oh, it's one point five million left of five million. Well, what did you do with the other four, four million, three point, three point five million, right? So there's no evidence of that. So, and, and then you talk about Trenton Waterworks, they, they have been proven to transact in this, in this way that we issue bonds, they come to us, everything is an emergency, they need it, they're gonna, they're gonna fix the, we're gonna give them four million dollars on Olden Avenue to fix the pipeline. The, the, the pipe hasn't been a shovel over there by Home Depot. Where's the four million dollars? The, the offer funding, here we are, five million dollar bond that we issued back in twenty twenty, I believe, a five million, and then I, I, I just wanted to see what the purpose was and, and how much has already, what, what has been spent down already? And it just seems money is just being unaccounted for. Every time you have, every time you put up a resolution, you should have the supporting documentation as to the funding, you know, of what has, you know, the, the full face, the face value, how much has been spent down and what's remaining. What projects are, are underway that is, that is funding and supporting. We don't, I don't see any of that here.
So it, Madam President, if the, if you would allow me, I, I can ask the director if we can table this to the next meeting and we can go back and, Councilwoman, I will provide you the invoices that have been submitted about this contract up until now, and we can also go back and, and provide you a, a detailed description, as you just mentioned, of the bond, bond ordinance. Well, the bond ordinance was actually, as you stated, was adopted on May fourteen, twenty twenty, and I can then go ahead and give you a breakdown as to what money has been used from, for that bond purpose.
Madam President?
If, if that is something that you would allow me to do, I will just table it to the next meeting.
Can I get a copy of that also?
Everyone can get a copy, yes.
Okay, so, so Mr. 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 Cruz, you're gonna go ahead and table it until the next meeting and by then we'll have the information disseminated to the board of the body.
Yes.
Thank you. So.
Thank you.
Ms. Penny Carter, resolution twenty-two dash one sixteen is gonna be tabled by the administration and to the next meeting, and then we'll place it back on, because by then all of the council members should have the information that, that they request.
Council President, don't they have to pull it? Because if we table it, we have to vote.
That's right.
Pardon me?
Don't they have to pull it? Because if we table it, we have to vote.
Correct.
Okay, yeah.
Well, if, if, uh, uh, yes, we can, we can pull it. I, I just don't, being that this is the voting portion. But yeah, I'll, I'll pull it.
Alrighty, thank you. Miss, Miss Penny Carter, will, will you note that, please, for the record?
Yes, I've noted it.
Thank you, thank you.
Now, we may continue.
Okay, Resolution twenty-two dash one-twenty, a resolution awarding a contract through a fair and open process in accordance with NJSA nineteen colon forty-four et cec to Mount, to Mott rather, McDonald for Olden Avenue Water Main Improvements Design Bidding and Construction Phase Engineering Services in an amount not to exceed four hundred and ninety-three thousand, nine hundred and sixty-three dollars for a period of one year from April eighth, twenty twenty-two to April seventh, twenty twenty-three, under RFP twenty-two-one dash forty-seven.
Ms. Carter, I thought that was consent.
No, that was a roll call.
No, that is definitely a roll call, um, because, um, I'm the one that asked that to be roll called because, um, um, my McDonald was the, uh, uh, engineer fir, engineering firm that originally were, was to put the cover on the reservoir. And, um, all of the, uh, the, the bonds that we issued for the covering of the reservoir, none of it, uh, came to pass. They was, they were to run pipes, uh, from, um, our end through American Water, uh, so that when, uh, they drained the reservoir and then we ended up with the tanks that were never filled. So Mott McDonald is that engineering firm. And I, I just, uh, told, uh, the administration from day one that we should not even be using Mott McDonald. We don't even know where the funding went. That we, the, the, the bond, uh, 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 monies that we, uh, voted for, we don't even know where that money went. And we still don't have a cover in twenty twenty-two. And this was twenty, uh, twenty-ten. And, um, that they, uh, had gotten, uh, that contract to cover the reservoir. I just don't even understand why they're, they are even in our, um, rolodex anymore or our database or whatever you. Uh, pardon me, Council President, why is it Director Lavender from Trenton Water? No, no, I didn't, no, 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 no. We can just go to the vote.
Can I have a motion and a second? Don't move. Second? Received no second, so we can't.
Second.
Councilwoman Caldwell Wilson?
Yes.
Councilman Harrison?
Yes.
Councilman Michelle?
Yes.
Councilman Rodriguez?
No.
Councilwoman Vaughn?
No.
Councilwoman Wilkins?
No.
Councilwoman McBride, Council President McBride?
No.
Failed forty-three. Now have, um, introduction, first reading and introduction of, of an ordinance, twenty-two dash oh-seven, Capitol Ordinance Providing for the Rehabilitation of Greenwood Avenue and Chestnut Avenue by and in the City of Trenton in the County of Mercer, State of New Jersey Appropriations one million, three hundred and eight thousand, two hundred and eighty-one dollars to pay for the cost thereof, which amount will be funded by New Jersey Transportation Trust Fund Grants received or expected to be received by the city from the State of New Jersey Department of Transportation. And it should be, um, scheduled for the.
Can you put it on the screen?
I'm sorry?
On the screen, miss, can you put it on the screen?
Joe?
Joe.
Mr. Revere?
Move up.
Yes.
And the public hearing should be, uh, May the eleventh, if my memory serves me.
Don't move.
Second?
Second.
Councilwoman Caldwell Wilson?
Yes.
Councilman Harrison?
Yes.
Councilman Michelle?
Yes.
Councilman Rodriguez?
Yes.
Councilwoman Vaughn?
Yes.
Councilwoman Wilkins?
Yes.
Council President McBride?
Yes.
Carried unanimously. Now may I have a motion for public comments?
Uh, Council President, before we go to public comment, can I ask a quick question about that ordinance?
Yes, you may.
You know, uh, I just want to say, um, you know, we got a lot of construction going on in the city. Uh, in my ward, you know, they're paving all of Stuyvesant Avenue, doing the curbs. Then the mayor, of course, has this, uh, demolition of the blight throughout the city. And, um, and now I see a, you know, one of our most beautiful blocks, uh, in the city. Greenwood Avenue is about to get, uh, uh, some type of improvements and upgrades being performed. And, but I don't see any inspectors around the city that's looking to make sure all these projects are done in a, um, and it, you know, uh, you know, examine them for quality assurance. So how are we spending all this money on all these very significant projects? And we have no professional inspectors making sure that our, our, um, we getting the bang for our buck and our contractors are, um, uh, doing things proper, properly to code and, and everything else, so, uh, to safety measures and all of that. There aren't any inspectors for any of these projects. So can the business administrator please address that issue?
Uh, Madam President?
Go right ahead, Mr. Cruz.
Hi, thank you, Madam President. The, the projects that are performed for road repairs, uh, sidewalks, as you can see, that on Stuyvesant Avenue was a huge project, is coming out beautifully. Um, uh, Councilwoman, uh, these projects, actually, when you award the contract for consulting services, not only do they do the design and the specification, but part of their contract is also for them to supply engineers to come and perform, um, daily inspections or perhaps, um, a couple of times a week inspections as the ro, as the work, uh, progresses. And, uh, uh, those results, uh, those, uh, inspections are then conveyed, uh, to the city, um, Director, uh, Wally Anatieri and, and his team. So there, there are, uh, professionals. And, um, you know, the, uh, part of those contracts requires that they have, uh, PE's, professional engineers. Uh, and, um, the inspectors, um, may not be the professional engineers, but the professional engineers are then supervising everything that is being, uh, brought during those inspections.
Well, only though I ask Mr. Cruz, I, I, I understand that the contractor has that on their end and, and.
No, we do. It's, 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 it's us, it's on our end.
I don't think you do.
Because they represent the city. No, no, they represent the city.
Can I, can I finish? So we all can see, as you stated here, because I'm not the only one. I'm asking this question on behalf of many residents, okay? Because many of these residents have been around, and some of them even worked in the City of Trenton for decades, Mr. Cruz. And they are seeing what I'm articulating here tonight, that there aren't any city inspectors that are coming around and expecting these projects. They had a, uh, demolition going on in, over there on Martin Luther King Boulevard for a couple of days, and the contractor didn't have the appropriate, um, uh, I guess, uh, uh, fencing and whatever, and cones and whatever do you want to barriers, that, that safety barriers around the project. So didn't have proper water holding and all this stuff. I don't know. I'm just telling you or sharing with you what the, the residents of the city are witnessing. So, um, I'm being told that, uh, the City of Trenton used to have inspectors in the Public Works Department that this is, that did this type of work for the city in-house. Who is doing that? That's all. How many men or women does Wally Anatieri have doing this work? Because it is like, it, it does require experience, right? So I want to know who these individuals are. Is Wally Anatieri, oh, go ahead, Mr. Cruz, if you can answer for him, I appreciate it.
Yes, no, I, I, I apologize. Yeah, Mr. Anatieri actually just texted me. He said that he would like to respond. So, uh, Wally, if you're available.
Yes, uh, good evening, Council President. Good evening, Council.
Yes.
Uh, uh, thank you, uh, Councilwoman Vaughn, for your question. Yes, we do have inspectors. If you remember, a year ago, you allowed me to hire a public work inspector, who is one of the guys that is out there with the inspectors, with the contractors and also the engineer. And also, I wanted to know that the states, any money the states give us, they have oversight. They also have inspectors that come out to this project to see them. Any states and federal grants, regardless of the, of the city, receiving the money and issuing the contract, they still have people come there and look at this. And again, we do have public work inspector in-house with our engineer. Thank you.
But who, who is that person? Because you only, you said you only have one person, right? You hired one?
Yes, we do, yes.
Is that enough for the whole city?
What we have.
So many projects underway simultaneously. So many projects are running parallel, right? So many across the city. Is one enough?
That is why, that is why I explained that the states also have any money, any funding that we have, which is a lot of thing we are doing with the state money. They do have inspectors. They do have oversight on everything we do. And the other ones, like anything from the water side, they do have inspectors also who does check on those contractors, just like we do. And we both.
So are you getting, are you getting these reports and sign-offs?
Yes, we do have reports, yes.
Okay.
Thank you. Alright, alrighty, I would like to move now to the public comments.
May I have a motion to accept public comments?
Miss, uh, Mr. Anatieri, uh, your hand is still up.
Council President, the first one is Erica.
Go right ahead, Erica.
Please state your full name for the record.
Erica, can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
Okay, perfect. Um, my name is Erica Melton. I'm one of the trainers over at Trenton Animals Rocks. Okay, to go ahead? Hi. Can you hear me?
Yes, we, we can hear you clearly.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure it's okay to go ahead. Okay, um, tonight, elected officials voted to kill almost half the dogs that enter their city shelter. With their votes, they told the residents of the cities of Trenton that they don't care about the hundreds of people and countless animals TAR has helped. I thank those who stood on the side of a positive change. Accusations were made against TAR by individuals who have not stepped foot in the shelter since TAR took over. Accusations that were unfounded, never fact-checked, and warranted no merit. I can assure you, the heartbreak those of us who work at TAR see would break, would bring most of you to tears. But we shed the same tears over every hard-fought victory. I've been in the shelter before and after TAR. The community outreach we provide is immeasurable, and we are so very proud of that. I am saddened to think that the majority of this council thought that turning around a shelter to no-kill, providing assistance to city residents, providing medical care to animals that enter this shelter and city residents' animals, and improving the image of a very ill-perceived shelter weren't worth our contract. Humanity starts with those who can't speak for themselves. Please remember that. Thank you.
Um, could you give me the next person?
Is, uh, Melissa Messina, Messinio? Melinda Messinio?
Miss Messinio?
I'm here, can you hear me?
Yes, we can. Go right ahead. Please state your name and your, and your address for the record.
My name and my address?
Yes, for the record, please.
My name is Melinda Messinio. I'm a resident in Harleysville, Pennsylvania, and I volunteer at Trenton Animals Rock. I drive an hour each way to volunteer in this shelter because there are not enough people caring for the animals that TAR takes care of. There are very few shelters, especially city-run shelters, that show the kind of compassion and love that this team puts forward for those animals and for the residents and for the people. They are not just about dogs. And I'm appalled that any city could sit there and say that we're totally fine with going back to a high kill rate because we don't care about animals. And that's what you guys said. And that just, it disappoints me, but it, it makes me sit here and go, this is why I'm thankful to no longer be a resident of Trenton. Because you don't support, you don't support your people, and you certainly don't represent us. It's appalling. Thank you.
The next one, Council President, is Randall?
Yes, I can. Okay. Hi, my name is Randall Kalmakov. Um, I volunteered with TAR. I am a foster and an adoptive.
Could you please put your, uh, uh, state your address for the record, ma'am?
I live in Ewing. No, but I work there and I care about people and animals.
Please, 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 if someone is speaking and they have the floor, everyone else, please remain silent. Go right ahead, Miss Randall.
I work there. I've also taught many students from there. So is a very, I, I have a lot of connection with the city, and I live right over the border. I am shaking right now because I am so appalled by the lack of compassion. I also have worked with numerous rescues in addition to TAR. I currently work with a professional dog trainer. Um, I also network with rescues across the country. What TAR has done is extremely rare, turning an open intake inner-city shelter into a no-kill shelter, also providing community outreach, which is a rare, rare, rare thing for a shelter to do. I have had contact with them numerous times. They have turned that shelter around. Every time I've called, because I've seen four stray dogs in the past few weeks, they are right out there getting those dogs. When I have had to call non-emergency PD during off-hours, I was sold, oh, we're not going to contact anyone. So I contacted Danielle, and she made sure someone went out and got that dog. What if that dog had bit a child? What if that dog had attacked another dog? PD didn't do anything. Trenton did. Trenton Animals Rock did. The lack of compassion that you guys are displaying, I, I'm, I'm, I'm disgusted by it. Furthermore, the, um, New Jersey Safe Haven Protection of Domestic Companion Animals Act was just introduced to the Senate on March second. If that act is passed, any New Jersey resident can drop off an animal, whether it's theirs or one they stole or found, at any shelter, police department, or, um, veterinary practice without answering any questions, without taking accountability, and that entity has to take that animal. If that act is passed, it was just introduced to the Senate, your city is going to be even more overrun with abandoned and stray animals. And they will have no where to safely go if you do not award TAR this contract. I, I would love to know, could anyone on the council tell me why they voted no?
This is not a question and answer, ma'am. State your, uh, state your, uh, uh, your opinion.
My, TAR is the only good thing that has come out of Trenton in a long time, it seems like to me. Yeah, smirk all you want. Yeah, smirk all you want, but I'm really disgusted by this. I really hope you reconsider.
Thank you, ma'am. Next.
Yeah, Paul Batea. I want to speak. Paul Batea wants to speak.
Go right ahead, Mr. Batea.
Uh, he's not next, Council President. It's Vanessa Sullivan. I'm sorry, Mr. Batea, but Vanessa Sullivan is next.
Uh, Mr. Batea, just hold up and let Mrs. Sullivan speak, and then you can speak afterwards. Go right ahead.
Excuse me, but his name is not up with his with the hand raised in the line, so.
But look, Ms. Ms. Penny Carter, there's a lot of people that are being kicked out. When they get an opportunity to come in, we'll hear them because
Okay.
on Tuesday, there was at least forty people kicked out of the call.
Oh, okay.
Go right ahead, Ms. Sullivan.
Hi, yes, good evening, fellow citizens of Trenton and the city council. Did y'all have a permit for those slave ships? We all took those Indians' land and all those things, and I had such a hard time. Excuse me. I had such a hard time to get that space for my peace rally this week. So I really am interested in knowing about all the community centers in Trenton that we should be able to utilize in the city to get together and spread the knowledge that our young people need to know. Because I asked a lot of young people that go to the community center if they know anything about the city council, if they know anything about the mayor, and let alone the police chief. Excuse me. And I had to say, y'all are scared of us? Well, guess what? We are scared of your neighborhoods too, Trayvon Martin. Okay, next I want to say, I'm speaking for, this is from a son of Trenton. I go to Trenton High School. I'm eighteen years old. I was shot two months ago, and I still don't know who did that. No word from the police. I'm lost. I lost my job. I lost my basketball arm. But I lived, and I said I must move forward. Finish school, graduate this year. Oh, excuse me. I am the man of the house, they said. They said I was a thug. They said I was poor. They said I was from the project. I was at the wrong place at the wrong time. But I tell them, son of mines, what did Sequoia do? What did she do? Be a kid, go outside and ride her bicycle, pray for this city, and pray for the world. We don't have gun stores in our neighborhoods. We don't have chemistry labs, all this chemical warfare, crack cocaine, and every other drug that's out there right now. And they got people out here selling weed. We got weed stores, but we got our brothers and sisters still in jail for weed charges. Next I want to say, y'all been talking about the police so much. Let's talk about the doctors and the nurses at the trauma center that they are at Helen Ford Hospital, and they seeing trauma victims coming there left and right. Huh? Could somebody from the city council, could we donate them a free dinner, a free lunch? Maybe they could come out and talk to these children and tell them that their brothers and sisters are dying in these hospitals. You understand? And we sitting here talking about an animal shelter, that that the animals ain't got nowhere to live. The people ain't got nowhere to live. You understand? So let's make it make sense. They talking about they want money for for the animals. Well, we want money for our people to live. We want things for our children to do. Our children's babies ain't got nothing to do out here. You understand? Huh? I asked the lady at the hospital today. Huh? Where can I take my children to get tested for lead? She said, she she looked at me like I was a fool. She said, reach out to the city of Trenton. Now, if anybody knows what are the effects of lead? Anger issues, huh? Maybe some of our babies out here are running around because they they got lead poisoning, and they going crazy. When the last time somebody talked about that? Now, I will be at Trenton Woodworks April the ninth at eleven a.m. to discuss this more. Okay? And last but not least, when we turn on that TV, we see the police killing us. We see the police doing things in our neighborhood. Y'all harassing us. Then we got the black-on-black time. We killing each other. We killing each other out here for what? We don't even own nothing out here. Y'all fighting for neighborhoods y'all don't even own them. And last but not least, I will root on the silent killers. The things that y'all know about the historical pollution that y'all haven't done anything about for years. Get those pipes fixed. Get those lead pipes fixed. And if y'all know where, how to, who, how to get the manpower, Trenton State Prison is right there. Put them brothers and sisters to work, especially the ones that got weed charges. You understand? So what y'all talking about? Thank you, and God bless you. And I love Sister Vaughn and Mary Miss McBride. Why? Because hell, yeah, they challenge us. We need to be challenged on every level. So if you don't like it, oh, well. They gotta do their job too. Thank you very much.
Uh, you said Paul Batea?
Mr. Batea.
Yeah, I'm still here. Yeah.
Go right ahead, Mr. Batea.
I'm trying to get on. All right. Yeah, I'm Paul Bate. Thanks for allowing me to speak. For number one, I'd like to discuss two things, the animal control. Number one, if you go down, um, uh, Public Works down the, uh, City Kirk's Office, you can get all the information and public knowledge about, uh, animal control. I worked there for four years. Animals, animals, the way we ran it in four years is that we had volunteers, and we had one doctor. And before this Animal Rock came on, we had little funding, and we took care of the animals the way they supposed to be taken care of. So all that, y'all want to give them three hundred and something thousand? You don't have to do that. You you can go right down there to the public, the City Kirk's Office, and Missy Lane got all, Missy Lane Babson got all the records of how that shelter was run. And number two, you got the animal control officers running around here, getting the animals and giving it to Animal Rock, and nobody in the city of Trenton can get the animal. And a lot of animals that that's coming from the city is coming from out of Ewing. Okay? And no animal in here that, uh, 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 that, um, that's in the city of Trenton bit no city, uh, bit nobody from the city. All the ones that the Animal Rock, whatever funding that is, when they dock them out, they people returns them because they adopting out aggressive dogs. The state governed that animal control for years. And it's no such thing of a no-kill shelter. You cannot dock a a aggressive dog out because he will rip a kid apart. And I have seen many pit bulls, several dogs, where we had to put them down because they was out there ripping kids apart. I'm telling you, it's no such thing of a no-kill shelter. Don't let that Animal Rock lie to you. That's why they overfunding now with all these dogs because they believe that you can't put a dog down. You cannot dock that a dog out that'll rip a human being apart. You can't do it, but they think you could. If they want to save them, y'all can go somewhere else with your animal control, worrying about saving a dog, and you got young babies out here that's dying. I mean, just dying, killing each other, and you worried about a dog. We can take care ourselves. We don't need y'all in Trenton. We can take care of Trenton. Let let Robin Vaughn and the council board do their job. Because if you take your time, go down to the City Kirk, like I said, pull up the information because everything that Missy Lane wrote is down there, and she'll show you. And she was on the phone earlier, but she had to get out and walk her dog. And she thought when she heard you voted down, that was a good thing. Because now maybe the animal control officers can go back in there and start doing their job, working, getting these animals and and giving them temper tests, and if they aggressive, put them down. But number two, this is another thing I want to talk to y'all about. Number two.
Wow.
The blood, the brothers out here is killing themselves. We just saw another brother out there on Marbury Street last night.
North Trenton?
Now, no, no, out there in East Trenton. Okay, the boy got killed. God forbid, his father is coming, okay? They killed the man's baby, all right? I don't know where this is going to lead to. But like I said before, when when council tried to get rid of this police commissioner, and that would have sent a message to the rest of the commissioners, if you come to the city of Trenton and don't dress the resident, then you're going to be out too. I don't care if you serve one day. Our babies are dying. They're not learning. They're not doing nothing. The schools ain't teaching. Okay, we got to get a grip on this crime. If we don't get a grip on this crime, I'm telling you, it's already running rapid. Bad enough, the drugs running rapid, okay? Where is the police at late night? Where they at? They tearing up the cars on Walnut Avenue, tearing them up. Who's got who's got to pay for it? The city of Trenton got to pay for it. Where the mayor at? Where's the mayor? Huh? The mayor need to come out and address it. Let us know what's going on out here. You got a lot of mothers out here. You got a lot of people out here that's homeless, sleeping in abandoned buildings, ain't got no food for their children. Um, listen to me. Y'all got to hear my cry because I'm telling you, God is watching us all. And I'm telling you, we got to deal with this problem. And the more we overlook it and worry about an animal, and an animal can take care of itself because animal control can take care of them animals, they know how to do it. Jason, Gabby, uh, and it goes on. Them guys know how to take care of them dogs. They know how to do it. We don't need no more body to, uh, uh, to take care of animals. We need to take care of our children so they get to get to school safely and get the teachers to start learning, and so we can take care of our babies that are out here dying. These guns are coming in to the city rapidly. I know where they're coming from. I'm not going to mention that. But we got to take a grip on crime, and we got to do it now. And I don't know why, 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 San Diego, I don't know why, when you tabled that, you just, I hate to say brothers, you're a good person, but you just killed one of our brothers, man. I'm telling you, man, you should have let that boat went through, got rid of that police commissioner, and you would have sent a nice message to anybody else that comes in here. They they think that we are a cash cow because that's all they think we is. We're a cash cow, man. And every time you turn around, we giving, uh, 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 money out to organizations that that has, we can take care of ourselves. We've been doing it for years. We don't need nobody coming to take care of us. Okay, you got Robin Vaughn lived here all life. You got Catherine live in Vietnam. You got me live in Vietnam. You got, uh, 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 Sonia. She worked for the city for years. She know how it go. We all know how it go. Don't tell me about the city of Trenton. We can deal with it. We don't need no outside group coming in to do anything. And I'd like to say thank you for allowing me to speak, and thank you for shooting down that Animal Rock. And I'm gonna say that y'all need to table that and keep that off the table and let the animal control go back in that building and do their job. Because right now, they're not letting them guys do their job, and they be telling me all the time they would love to go back and do their job. But that lady don't want them to go back and do their job because you know why? She turned it into a cash cow. That's what she did. And anybody that's speaking for her doesn't live in the city of Trenton and don't care about our kids. God bless y'all. Good night.
Oh, who's who's next?
Uh, Michael, Michael Renallo.
Okay, so so we're going to hear from Mr. Renallo, and then we're going to hear from people that have been blocked out because there's people that are trying to come in. I heard a woman trying to come in that she does, um, she's she must be on the phone. So we're going to have to acknowledge that. So, Mr. Renallo, um, you you're going to have to wait, ma'am. We're going to let you in after Mr. Renallo. Mr. Renallo, um, you have the floor.
Thank you, Council President. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Thank you. Um, just to preface my comment, I'm speaking outside my position on the board of Trenton Animals Rock. Uh, my name is Michael Renallo. I am a resident of Trenton, and I would like to express my disappointment in the failure to pass the funding for Trenton Animals Rock. I won't speak to how I feel about the people that voted against it. I'll approach it from a more pragmatic standpoint. You've just cut a relationship that is a perfect example of a public-private relationship where the return on the investment from the city gains the city the hundreds of thousands of dollars that we fundraise and use to put towards the welfare and health of those animals. We also provide services for residents of the city. We chip animals. We provide free food. We have a pet pantry that we did about a month ago that provided hundreds of residents of the city with free food for their pets that couldn't afford it. So speaking from that standpoint, I'm extremely disappointed on a short-sighted decision to cut funding for an organization that provides such a dramatic return on the investment the city provides. Thank you very much for the opportunity to comment.
Thank you. Um, so the the, wait a minute, Councilwoman Vaughn. I'm going to let this young lady come in that is on a phone. State your name, um, young lady, and your address.
Good evening, council and members. Jacqueline, Northside District. My call is not about mixing friendship with business or favor. I'm calling because I am very disappointed when I see North Trenton and look around and ask myself, where is I Councilwoman Marge Caldwell-Wilson? To me, nowhere to be found. But when there's a question about other concerns, it's a yes, 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 yes. I listened to the meeting on Tuesday about an animal shelter. I have nothing against animals, but I'm asking about also a homeless shelter as well. Dogs don't carry guns or sell drugs or kill. Our seniors are wary, and they make up like a hundred percent of the vote and support. I am looking for North Ward Councilwoman I voted for, not the one that seems to have got a little over the hill and can't handle her district. Thank you so very much, council.
The next person.
Uh, it's Sherry Garret.
Go right ahead, Ms. Garret. Um, um, we have to go back and forth to the people that's on the phone that can't get in, that we can't see their hands. Mrs. Garret, go right ahead.
Yes, um, Council President, thank you, uh, Council President and, um, councilbody. I'm going to, um, uh, reiterate, uh, what Elaine Thaxton. She was the Animal Shelter Bureau Chief and Manager from two thousand and seven, two thousand and seventeen. And she did email me her shelter accomplishments. I'm just going to read off as much as I can within the minutes. The operation process, uh, she states, has an onsite vet, had an onsite vet, Dr. McWilliams, who served as the lead, um, lead in making medical decisions on all animals coming through the shelter, to ensure the shelter was operating according to state guidelines. He worked up to twenty-plus hours per week but remained on-call to advise emergency situations. Partnered up up to Area Five Vet Hospitals to address emergency vet cases. Partnered with almost twenty-five different rescue groups that took in animals slated for rescue. Partnered with over forty volunteers to assist with adoption activities, walked and exercised animals, fed, bathed animals, and were available to assist whenever and wherever possible. Partnered partnered via a grant with PetSmart to host adoption events. Also, also agencies provided us with monthly supplies of food, crates, toys, holiday gifts for animals and other supplies they needed to make the animals comfortable. Set up new emissions requirements, requirement procedures that included administering bore the teleshots, uh, weighing them, and providing them with deworming medication as per vet orders. Maintained state requirements of only one dog per kennel, even from the same household. Plus, no dogs were allowed to be housed in crates. No dogs were allowed to allow to allow in to in the outside portion of a kennel, even if they were short on space. Shelter took in over four hundred-plus animals yearly. Discharged animals via foster, adoption, return to owner, or died in shelter and euthanized. Established new protocols that dealt with fostering, recruiting, handling animals, cleaning the cage, and other risk-reduction protocols to serve to not only keep the animals safe, but staff, volunteer. but staff, volunteers, but staff, volunteers, and visitors safe. New, got rid of, new, she says, got rid of all the old cat cages, then purchased new and more secure stackable cages for smaller dogs and cats, dedicated what used to be office space storage, storage for those animals, designated a separate area for sick cats, sick small dogs, to reduce the spread of disease, purchased brand-new feeding bowls and utensils, scratched past, uh, cage boxes for, uh, ferret cats, for, uh, feral cats, purchased gifted blankets for the animals to sleep on, purchased gift new cots for the kennel dogs, preventing them from sleeping on hard cement floors, because many of the brick barrier walls in the kennel area have weakened over the years. Ordered, I ordered that they be reinforced with fresh, uh, mortar to prevent them from collapsing on the dog. Had the old case doors for each kennel removed and replaced with brand-new, easier-to-open doors. Contracted with a private painting company to repaint the walls and floors in the kennel area with special, uh, 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 paint that serves to help reduce the smell of urine and other odors. Addressed leaking issues by contracting with a vendor for roof and gutter repair, then eliminate the water leaks inside the kennel. Purchased a large trailer that was used to store pet food and other sh- shelter supplies. This eliminated the problem with rodents that would tear into the bags and leave unhealthy droppings in the food we use for feeding our animals. Installed new fencing around the per- perimeter of the shelter, shelter grounds, to ensure more privacy and prevent the animals from escaping while they were exercising outside. Partnered with the local Home Depot, Depot to plant animal-friendly shrubbery and flowers in front of the facility to help improve the overall aesthetics of the facility. Also purchased our own lawnmower and snow remover when it became difficult to get the city grounds people to cut grass and move snow on the ground basis. Purchased four brand-new vehicles, as well as large transport vans that were currently being used by the HLE officers. Replaced old rusted outdoors, doors throughout the facility that was riddled with mice. When City Council would not approve a request to hire a painting company to come paint office areas at the shelter, I partnered with the County Correction Institution to allow inmates to come paint the walls, then purchased user-friendly frames and pictures that were displayed throughout the building to greet visitors. Because of the drainage problem that was never addressed, outside plumbers were hired to come open up the drain system that, that is an ongoing problem. The shelter has long before I became manager, with a nice donation from the shelter's volunteer group, a new dog run was installed to be used to exercise the dog, had new surveillance cameras installed, installed to better protect. Hours, but it goes on.
I'm doing well.
So, I'm not really sure what the Animal Rock is speaking about, but they're saying, uh, that we weren't, the, the, the city of Trenton, uh...
I know you can see my progress on, um, on Guess Eye.
Wait a minute, wait a minute, wait a minute, Mr. Rivera.
My word.
Mr. Rivera.
I didn't wanna get another text message from you saying, "Are you done yet?" So, that...
Mr. Rivera.
I'm finished. I do, like, you are...
I'm trying to find the person.
Hold on, you're a little early, yeah.
There we go.
I'm sorry, uh, she, she goes on and on about purchasing washer and dryers, uh, ordnance. She also stated, um, when I spoke with her, she stated that, you know, the animal shelter is, uh, governed, has inspectors from the state of New Jersey, and you had to make, they came in and did their oversight to make sure that they were operating and functioning in that shelter, um, uh, uh, that were compliant, and following the rules and regulations that were, that should have been, uh, applied in operating the shelter. She also said that, um, she submitted monthly reports, uh, like Mr. Pathia has stated, and there was something really I wanted to really say before I came out of it, that she, that I, the shelter op- oh, she said the no-kill, that's the thing I wanted to say to you all. She stated it's a state law, state of New Jersey law, that if the animal is in the shelter for seven days or more, and it's not adopted out, or as Mr. Pathia said, it was aggressive dog, they had to, uh, uh, kill the dog, kill the animal, or, yes. So, it's a state law, it's not that they were rampantly just, you know, disposing of these dogs just for the heck of it. They are required, their laws there are, uh, are in effect, that they have the guidelines they have, that are in effect that they have to follow. So, I don't, I don't, not sure if, um, that's where the misunderstanding came in about it being a kill shelter or whatever, there are state requirements that you have to get rid of the dog. And she also stated, like Mr. Pathia said, and if you did, do decide to go back, city of Trenton has to be careful, because if that dog, if a dog is adopted out, uh, from that shelter, and it's aggressive dog, and it does attack or, or, or harm someone, the state, I mean, the, the, um, the, uh, animal shelter can be sued. That's, that's it. And it was a great meeting tonight, you, you, uh, 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 Council President, and the rest of Council Body, excellent, but Council President, I, I, I hear, hear to you, um, and you're, you're really handling it, you handling your stuff, thank you.
Um, the next person, do we have any, do we have anyone on the phone? That cannot, uh, put a hand up? Is there anyone on the phone? Hearing no one.
I know that, um, Mr. Mr. Scott might be here.
Is, is Mr. Scott, are you on the phone?
Yes, yes.
Um, okay, go right ahead.
Yes, um, my name is Kevin Scott, I live in Lodi, New Jersey. I don't live in Trenton, but I have come to several rallies through People's Organization for the Progress, I represent People's Organization for the Progress. And I'm calling because I see that there's many, there's a lot of people talking about animals, like we're talking about things in the city. However, people are not understanding the most important thing of the government. It's rule number one, is for them not to attack their own people. I'm, I was, I was, I think that all of us in this call could probably agree that if we were to have a government, we would, the first rule of thumb...
For those who they voted, or whatever, I mean, there was no, there was not even an opportunity to speak about them. Wait, 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 wait a minute. Mr. Rivera, you're gonna have to stop these people with this rudeness. They're not, they're respectful to the person that has the floor. Go right ahead, um, Mr. Scott.
Yes, so, the, uh, thing, all I'm trying to say is, though, the most important thing, if you were having a government, I would believe that we would all understand that if we would have a choice of a government that is, uh, going to give us everything we need, uh, such as food, shelter, animal care, all this is like that, but at the same time, that government turns around and kills you every now and then, or beats you, or imprisons you, or hurts you, or harms you. I would think that we would still choose to just rather be on our own than that. Hence, I'm saying that we have a power issue in this country, in Trenton and in New Jersey, and it starts with the police, and it goes to the entire justice system. I don't understand why we're ignoring the most obvious issue in this country, and that is police and judicialist conduct, which is the prosecutors putting our children in jail innocently, prosecutors putting innocent people in jail consistently, and police beating and killing innocent people or people that are not deserving of this. This is the most important thing that, that needs to be happening in the government. This is the most important thing that councils would be concerned about, because we should not be paying our dollars to be beaten, killed. I was beaten, and my wife was beaten, at the scene of, at the, at the, while, while my brother-in-law's body was dead, when he died of un, uh, natural causes. And we were beaten while there at his, at his body, innocent people doing absolutely nothing by the police. And this happened across this country all day. I'm frustrated beyond reproach that this country keeps on killing, beating, and slamming its own people. People of color, people of red, blue, any color you are, you guys are beating us, killing us, slamming us, and I for one am tired of it. And I think it's time for us as people to rise up, whether it's the council people who are not turning a blind's eye, or whatever it is, or people turn a blind's eye. I'm telling you, I'm sick of it. I'm sick of seeing on, on T- TV every day someone getting beaten or killed by the police officers. I'm sick of every day seeing somebody go to jail innocently when we're paying our tax dollars. That's what you guys supposed to be doing, not kicking our behinds. We have a man, uh, his name is, uh, I got pulled up, who was killed by the police. No, not killed, he was still paralyzed, and he probably took that charge with by Trenton. And he's not even from Trenton. And he's, and he's still over there, Jaquan Henderson, has been shot by the police. And there was a protest just last Thursday, Jaquan Henderson, just last Thursday, with People's Organization for the Progress, trying to get you guys to put these people in jail. You chance the people need to step up and say something, or you're worth nothing. If you don't stand up for this, when this unarmed person had no gun and now he's paralyzed, I don't care what the circumstances are, I don't care what the hypotheticals are that people try to say. This man had no gun, had nothing on him, and people are trying to say that he deserves something. Nobody deserves something if they have no weapons, and they have a bottle. No weapons, no guns were found, and this man is paralyzed? And the people who killed, who put him in that position are not behind bars? When people are put behind bars simply for weed on the streets of Trenton? Simply walking around, jaywalking or whatever, doing innocent crimes, doing things that aren't even crimes? And we're putting our people over there, there's obvious a power and a value difference going on in this city and across this country. And I think it's time for us people, citizens, to get the counsel, we need to rise up and say enough of this nonsense. Oh, it's good, you're gonna be next. It happened to me, I was innocent, I'm innocent, my wife was innocent. It happened to my friend Apurna, she's on this call, and pretty sure it's happened to several of us. Wake up and realize what the real issue is, the people of power are the issue. And you guys need to stop it, and we're gonna rise up and take over you, because you are not caring about us. And you get to keep walking around without any fear of the police, without any fear of the prosecutors, as they hunt and kill us, specifically the black ones. And I for one am tired of it. And I hope people listening are tired of it as well, because it's getting out of hand. It's way out of hand. And we can care about animals, and we can care about trash, but we can take care of that ourselves, we don't need a government to do that. But we can't be having a government attack us every day. And I'm sure they're attacking you every day in Trenton down there. I know how it is, I know what redlining is, I know what, uh, ghettos are, and how much police are put inside the ghettos. And I know every day somebody's hit by one of them, and I'm sick of it. Right, so, bye.
Thank you, thank you. Um, Ms. Ms. Vaughn, give me the next, uh, person with their hand up.
Uh, Trenton Business.
Go right ahead, Trenton Business, state your name and your address.
Thank you, my name is Ms. Chowdhury, um, I have a rental on Greenwood Avenue. Can I, can I go ahead?
Go, go right ahead, ma'am.
Okay, um, first of all, um, just to keep it in order, although I thought that the points Mr. Scott made were excellent. Um, Mr. Scott is a, um, he's a teacher, um, like myself, and, um, he was harassed by the police, as was his spouse. Um, she is a marriage therapist. Um, evidently, by the end of their incident, they were both, um, you know, similar to Henderson, they were given a bunch of cover charges, um, and told that they assaulted and attacked the police, um, which is completely out of character, you know, and, uh, so, uh, it was good to hear him speak. Um, but I wanted to go back in order, um, to the housing issue. The housing issue with IBN Construction, IBN does not have a Dun &amp; Bradstreet number. Um, there are much, much smaller businesses that do less than a hundred thousand dollars of business that have Dun &amp; Bradstreet numbers, so that, that is a definite red flag. Um, they also don't have a business address, um, which is another red flag. Um, and I, I questioned these kind of contracts for exactly these kind of issues. Um, the shelter issue is, um, interesting, but I think it's a question of priorities. What concerned me so much about the discussion of that is not that the animals don't matter, it's that there are so many other pressing and urgent issues here in Trenton. You know, there is a crisis in policing here, there's a crisis in poverty, there's a crisis in crime. These to me are the biggest issues. For me, the policing is the biggest issue. But crime, poverty, and overpolicing, they're all related. And, 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 you know, Mr. Scott's right, you know, Trenton operates like a ghetto, except it just doesn't have the actual fencing around it. And people here are treated like, like residents of a, like, you know, basically like we've just all recently been released, um, or we are about to be criminals. The deeper issue about the, the, the animal shelter is the funding issue. What happens is certain people have access to certain funding, whether it's experience, whether they are, they are grandfathered into it, whether they are brought into it through, um, you know, uh, connections. But it does not make sense to me that a group is getting this kind of funding, um, as much as I think it's an important issue. Um, so, you know, and I would also kind of challenge the people that, you know, certain animals are personified and certain animals are not. You know, why, why do certain animals get sheltered and certain animals, um, get, uh, consumed? You know, so, um, I think, I think the animal, uh, shelter issue is a distraction. That's what I think, I think it's a distraction from other much realer issues that are happening here. Issues can be dealt with in parallel if we had, you know, an unending, uh, stream of income here, but we don't. So, there has to be, there has to be a prioritization of issues. And, um, animals to me are not, it's not something I think about much in Trenton. I, I very rarely see stray animals. So, it's just not, it's not that it's not important, it's not important enough right now. Um, I think what's much more important is the constant obliteration of human rights and civil rights that happens in our policing here in Trenton. Um, I think that the police in general have a deep disregard of the humanity of Trentonians, um, and of Trenton residents in general, I think they, they actually have what seems to me almost like a disdain. Um, and I think that there is a constant effort to criminalize, criminalize people in Trenton. Um, I'd like to address the situation with Henderson, I spoke about it last time, but that was a little bit more limited. Um, what happened to Henderson, Ja- Jaquan Henderson, who was, um, shot by four jump-out boys, was unacceptable. The jump-out boys are, uh, yeah, the police need to be disciplined, um, and jailed, um, and charged with the crimes. But, um, the jump-out boys have a long and troubling tradition here in the U.S. Um, they are a group of police, they are, you know, sometimes called street teams. Um, but, uh, they call themselves the jump-out boys because they jump out quickly on people. Jumping out on anyone is an assault on human rights, it's an assault on civil rights, it's an assault on the property rights of your own body. The revolution was fought because, you know, the American, you know, rebels or freedom fighters did not want British soldiers entering their houses. But here in America, three hundred year, or three hundred and change years later, we're still doing that, not we, but the police are doing that all the time, like, we have actually gone back to that time. The police are entering houses unidentified, unannounced, with questionable warrants, or no warrant at all, a, a warrant that was obtained because somebody is friends with a judge, because the correction goes all the way from street level all the way to the judges. This is a larger issue, it's not just the police that have the issue, it's the judges, the prosecutors, the prosecutors' offices. They refuse to prosecute anything. They refuse to prosecute anything until it hits the media. Whi- which is exactly what Anafree did. Um, this was not a big deal until it was. Um, so, the issue, the situation with Henderson was just another example of police overstepping, overstepping their bounds, criminalizing people with absolutely no cause. They boxed this man in. I, I'm not sure that I would have reacted that much differently. If, if my car were actually boxed in in the middle of the night, if anyone on this call has ever been surrounded by police officers, in, at night, in the dark alone, it is a frightening, frightening experience. And he did very little, um, that, that, that was incorrect. Um, and he paid with his body and his mobility, and it's absolutely unacceptable. And it's, it, it is the most pressing issue, because the psychological intergenerational effects of the trauma of these kind of thing, the, the depression it causes, the, um, tension it causes, um, the inability to go to your job and function, um, the, the lack of trust it causes in the institutions of the neighborhood, those trickle down into so many different other aspects of life. So, it's not just a one-off incident. This is an entire push for people, you cannot criminalize, assault, and harass a group of people again, and again, and again, and not expect pushback. It actually goes into our gun violence issue. If people don't feel that they have access to the mechanisms of the state, and they don't have access to justice, they're going to take justice into their own hands. I've had multiple people in the past, multiple renters who are gun owners, because they will not call the police. They absolutely will not call the police, because they don't trust the police, because the trees, the police have ruined their trust and are not trustable here. So, so our gun violence is even related to the fact that people are not dealing with the issues in any other manner. Mr. Freedom Green spoke, spoke very eloquently to this at, um, at a ceremony for the little girl Sequoia, I believe is her name, who was shot. And interestingly, there was not a single policeman there, so please don't let the policeman tell you that, that they care at some sort of, you know, real and visceral level. Not a single police officer was in attendance there. So, I think that, um, our first and most pressing issue continues to be the issue of, um, police brutality. It is out of control in Trenton, it, it has always been out of control, and it's continuing to be out of control. We're not getting enough reform, we're not getting the strong leadership, and we're not getting the reaction from our leaders that should be happening. This is an urgent issue, it is a crisis. No one else in other nations lives like this. Their, their police officers aren't armed, their police officers are not let go, their police officers do not on the regular shoot civilians, or attack them, or criminalize.
Mrs. Chowdhury, your, your, your time, your time is up, ma'am.
Okay, and I just want to say we need civilian review boards, we need real reform, we need to end qualified immunity, we need to abolish police unions. It's, it's a... It's a sick marriage. It's a sick marriage with the unions, the judges, the prosecutors. They're all in on this big charade, and it needs to be struck down at every level. Thank you. Sorry about going over my time.
Thank you. Next person?
Good evening, Council President. Counsel as a body to the citizens on here, Darren Freedom Green, 273 Church Street, Trenton, New Jersey. I want to first send love, respect, and condolences to the young man who was killed out of Trenton last night. I think a part of what perpetuates our historical failure is we've normalized black and brown bodies being on the ground. Nothing is said, nothing is done, as if that's normal behavior. That's somebody's family. He's a part of our collective family, and an acknowledgement of that helps upstart the process of corrective methods. So, I wanted to send my condolences to that young man's family, another senseless death that we all are responsible for. I want to give three quick points. Over at Trenton Housing Authority, under the direction of our executive director, Jelani Garrett, we're working on a number of programs that help the city become better. We definitely have some public safety issues, but part of our public safety issues is empowering the public who lives here. And one of the things we're working on is the FSS program. We have over 35 families being worked on from the areas of education, going back to school, career orientation, and this is done through our connections with Mercer County Community College. There's also a homeownership component being done by Farida Stokes, who's an amazing Realtor, teaching financial literacy and all the components that allow families who have often been renting all of their lives to have an opportunity for homeownership. That is one program. We have an amazing outreach coordinator, Mrs. Lanery, who's doing great work, and that is one thing that we're doing. The second program that you can look at, we've connected Trenton Housing, again, with Mrs. DeWey Dixon over at the county and Robert Taylor, who are doing restorative justice work. We're connecting with them as a partnership to bring some of those services here and support them. They provide mental health services, employment services, social services, life skills, workforce development, housing services. Again, another relationship builder with Trenton Housing and the county, which provides opportunities, resources, and availability for families to empower themselves. And then the last piece is part of our North Trenton Development. We actually had a working development workshop where the babies inside of this city, who go to the schools in this city, were able to develop a plan, and they drew up a park that they want to design in our North Trenton Development. And they actually wanted to name the park after our hometown hero, Athing Mo. So, those are just three things that Trenton Housing is a part of. I'm speaking to council, but I'm really trying to speak into the citizens who live here. If the only thing you bring to the council meeting is a negative attitude, a negative component, a negative piece, and you never find yourself to be injecting a solution into all that's wrong, then we will never get right as a collective whole. It isn't the mayor's responsibility, it isn't the council's responsibility, it is collectively all of our responsibility to recover and revive our city. And I'm hoping these words here tonight help us get back on the path. We have a number of issues, but if the only thing you do is speak to the issue and leave it on the table, who do you think is going to provide corrective method? Who do you think is going to make it correct? Again, we have to be a part of every solution that's here. I think the policing issue is a problem. I think Trenton Business spoke to it quite eloquently, and she stated a number of consistent points that we do have to work on. And I said that when I spoke about the police director. There are some things I'm at odds with him about, and certainly until we form and build a bridge of community policing, we will never get forward. But that means holding accountability on both sides, and we haven't arrived there yet. And that means having integrity, having police officers who don't just park in our community, but get out, walk, talk, and build relationships with the people in the community so we build a responsible and respectful relationships. I won't hog any more of the time, but I'm just hoping people come to this meeting and understand this is about the business of the city, and all of our business in the city should be about rebuilding, revitalization, and building the city we all so beloved. Thank you for allowing me to speak.
Next person, Councilwoman. Is there anyone on the phone that needs to come in?
The next person, then it's Amanda.
Pardon me?
Amanda.
Amanda? Go right ahead. Can you hear me, Amanda? Go to the next person, Councilwoman Vaughn.
Michael Anthony.
Go right ahead, Michael Anthony.
Good evening, Council. Can you hear me?
Yes, I can. Go right ahead.
Just to touch back on the Juwan Henderson incident.
No, 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 you have to state your name.
Oh, I'm sorry. I apologize. My name is Michael C. Anthony II, and I am a resident of Trenton, the South Ward. The incident with Juwan Henderson is extremely unfortunate. As I expressed to my cousin, you know, I imagined myself being the person sitting there in that car, tired from work, because by day I run my business full-time, and in the evening I work at a group home with autistic boys, and when I get home, I am tired. And I want to sit in my car simply because the heated seats feel good. But it really flabbergasted me that I could be Juwan Henderson, sitting on my street in Chambersburg, enjoying my heated seats, just thinking about, I need to get in the house, but I just can't get there yet, right? And I have anxiety. I suffer with anxiety every day. I have for almost 10 years. And they wouldn't have to worry about shooting me because I would panic so much that my poor little heart would give out. You know, growing up, I'm an 80s baby. I'm 38 now. I remain synonymous for me growing up, Officer Caver, Officer Russell, and Big Red. Why? They were always in the street. They're always in the street. You knew who they were, and they made you comfortable with the police, and we definitely don't see that. I don't see it. Even last night, I didn't see it. You know, two officers, I don't know who they were looking for, ran into my yard and my neighbor's yard, guns blazing with flashlights, and there I am standing in my kitchen, thinking I'm gonna be Juwan Henderson, in my own kitchen, trying to eat vanilla wafers, looking out the window, wondering if they can see me looking out. Terrified. Anxiety going through the roof because that incident isn't the first, it's just one that we really know about, but it's been happening over the years around the world. But now that it hits so close to home, it's a different kind of feel for me. You know, it's an everyday thought. You know, I'm at work now. When I leave here and go home, you know, I'm gonna be wondering, when I sit outside my house, looking for a parking spot, are they just gonna jump out on me and bang on my window? And I don't want that. I also want to touch on, you know, Trenton Animals Rock. I appreciate, you know, some of the work that they've done, but I know personally, adopting from there, I didn't have the best experience. You know, I adopted a dog last year for my anxiety, and, you know, after I took my dog home, you know, I unfortunately had a death in the family that just, you know, knocked me off my feet. So, quite naturally, what happens? I disappear. Well, they're calling third parties to get to second parties to get to me, pretty much saying I stole the dog. You can't steal a dog if they have your address and all your paperwork that you had to fill out before taking the dog. And when I finally talked to Danielle, it was, oh, we didn't know where the dog was. And I told her that my address didn't change from the original day only about a week and a half ago, completing the paperwork. It's not like we're getting the dogs for free either. We pay for that. 3:30, 3:50, something like that. I don't quite remember. But what does that look like at the end of the year from a business standpoint? I love very animals, and I would not want many to be put down, but Trenton is in a different place where that can't be our sole focus anymore. We've got $73 million of money floating in the city, floating right out from people that don't even live in the city, businesses that not even are part of the city. You know, I'm sitting here earlier, looking at the Conservatory Mansion. If you're from Trenton, you've been here forever and a day, you know the Conservatory Mansion. You participated in an activity, or you've held an event there. There is no reason why they should be denied $20,000, and be pushed down to 10, and then council has to stand up and say, well, this is what we would like to do. What is wrong with the administration? If the money is there, give it to them. And it shouldn't even be a loan at this point. The administration has all this money. It shouldn't be a loan, should be a last resort, right? Why? Because as a small business, we get these loans, and guess what? Sometimes things don't happen, and then we can't even pay it back. But that grant will give us our best possibility of thriving and growing and surviving and being able to continue having a part of our Trenton, right? So that we're not gentrified like previous administrations with thousands and thousands of buildings owned by Ajax Management. Because that also flabbergasted me how they own an entire block of East State Street. How does that work? I yield the floor.
Thank you. Next person, Councilwoman Vaughn.
It's Wendy Sturgeon.
Yes, go right ahead, Ms. Sturgeon.
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Okay. My name is Wendy Sturgeon. I live in Hamilton Township, New Jersey. First, I am appalled by what the previous caller said about Vice President and Council Marge Caldwell-Wolson's presence and contributions to her community. I know firsthand, I'm her confidential aide, and I am appalled by anyone not knowing what the heck she has been doing for the city at every event involved. I've been with her when she's taken calls on a weekend, a nighttime, and so therefore anyone that speaks against Marge Caldwell-Wolson and what she has contributed during her time on city council is disgusting. Second of all, I think it's very important for people to understand, we shouldn't be comparing people to animals. I volunteered at the Trenton Animal Shelter for 10 years. Is anyone on this call that is calling up and talking about how much Elaine did for the shelter during the time she was there? Were they a volunteer there at the shelter for 10 years? I was working in the cat room one time when someone had to bring in one of their dogs. That dog didn't even get a chance to make it past a tiny hallway before I personally saw it euthanized and pulled out in a black bag. I saw it with my own eyes. I saw the way the shelter was run before. I must say that Elaine worked with me well, and during Hurricane Sandy, she let me pull out kittens that she knew probably wouldn't make it during the time of that hurricane. But let me tell you something about Elaine. She actually had a time when she had somebody's name wrong, and I won't mention the name. She wanted to get rid of a very good volunteer for the Trenton Animal Shelter for the dogs. And you know what? She misunderstood that the person had the same first name and ended up banning, banning a woman that worked for the cats, not the dogs. I also want to say that I know that Marge Caldwell-Wolson started the Lady Margaret Animal Foundation, and guess what? When I was working there, there was no air conditioning for the dogs. Where the dogs resided looked like the Green Mile. It was hot. They were sweating. They had no opportunity for adoption. People had a hard time coming in there to look for adoption. And you know what Marge Caldwell-Wolson did? She started a foundation and donated all of her money from that foundation to the Trenton Animal Shelter, including putting on a new roof, because those dogs were laying on chipped paint in their cells. That's what they were. They were cells. And she put up a new roof on that shelter so those animals could have an opportunity to be in some form of comfort. Another thing that I want to mention to you is that the cats would never even be let out. I volunteered there. I could hold a cat. The cats weren't allowed the entire time they were there to even walk out of that shelter and put their feet on the ground. They were stuck in cages the whole time. And another thing that I want to mention is that you can't be comparing at this time animals to people. Yes, I understand the importance of the people in Trenton. I work in the city of Trenton, and I feel for all of the sorrows and the things that are going on in Trenton. But you know what? It's about time that the mayor stops creating lawsuits because the lack of understanding of the government and how Trenton City Council and how the government should work in the city of Trenton. And you know what? Maybe a lot of that money that's being wasted on BS lawsuits due to the Trenton Mayor, Reed Gussiora, could be going to TAR, who has been actually creating such a different environment for those animals than they had before. And as I said, I know firsthand. I know firsthand from Marge. I know firsthand from being a volunteer there and proud to be a confidential aide to a woman that has committed her entire term on making that city better. And you know what? I had hope in this mayor, but obviously, he has been causing problems with the council. That is why the council seems so separated. It isn't based on just what's happening out in the streets. It isn't based on what's going on in the animal shelter. It is being mismanaged by a person that doesn't have to be a mayor of a city. And I hope that he doesn't win again. And let me tell you this. You tell me how there can possibly be a better answer to what's going on now than what TAR is doing for that shelter with a lot of claims from people that have not even been to that shelter to see the improvements that it's made and the ACOs and the people that put their blood into that shelter. And shame on all of you that compare people to animals. Animals have no voice. People have a voice. And furthermore, let me just say this, that if you want to make comments about the Trenton Shelter, go back years in time. I have pictures, if you'd like me to send them to you, of the animals in those cages. I've seen those animals pulled out in black plastic bags that were put in a tiny hallway to be temperament tested before they even knew where the heck they were when their owners disbanded them. And yes, there is a seven-day hold on animals, but being very involved in the Hamilton Township Animal Shelter, there was an animal. His name is Petey, and he was gonna be euthanized, and we were able to get him out of there, very much like the work TAR does. And that animal now that was gonna be euthanized, that was considered to be trouble, is now living in a home and loving a senior citizen and is a very welcome addition to their family. So, this is what I question. I question people putting animals up against people in the city of Trenton. Those are two totally separate things. And I think it's obnoxious, absolutely obnoxious, some of you on council that I know quite well that are going against giving TAR the opportunity to get animals adopted, get animals fostered. And you know what? Go back during the 10 years when I was volunteering with this council, before Marge got her hands into that shelter to do something important. Being with Marge Caldwell-Wolson out of the state in the middle of the night when people called when she was on vacation asking about snow removal, she took their calls. She goes to their events. I've been at her events. I know her better than any of you. Shame on all of you, and shame on you if you don't support Trenton Animals Rocks for all the very good things they do. And God help us all if we end up going backwards to where we were with the way the animals were treated before. Thank you.
Thank you. The next, yes.
The next one is Megan Lurilli.
Megan?
Megan Lurilli.
Good evening.
Yes, go right ahead. State your name and your address.
Perfect. My name is Megan Lurilli, and I am a resident of the, I'm calling today. First, I'm calling today in support of Trenton Animals Rocks. I had a really positive experience working with them. My family chose to foster some of their animals over the holidays when we were available to have the time to really kind of take on an additional family member, you know, for a short amount of time. What I saw from Trenton Animals Rocks is that the people that work there, they truly, not just that they care of us, it's also that they...
Hold on, Megan. Megan, hold on for just a minute. Mr. Rivera, I'm asking you for the tenth time, please mute the people that are being disrespectful when a person has the floor to speak. Go right ahead, Megan. I apologize.
Not a problem. Um, so what I, essentially, I really do want to voice my support for Trenton Animals Rocks. I feel like, um, what they provide for the city and for Trenton families in particular, um, with their food pantry and how they work to socialize, um, dogs that might not otherwise be able to find, um, homes. Um, I think they do really good work, and I think it falls on citizens of Trenton, yes, to support them, but I think it also does fall on the city, um, to show their support and to really kind of boost up this organization, which is trying to help us be our best selves, right? And how we treat our animals and how we treat each other, right? Um, I think what I'm noticing from a lot of the calls is that there is that stark comparison to like what the city is doing for its people versus, you know, this organization coming in and saying they want all this money to take care of animals. And I do agree that, you know, people should come first. Absolutely. Our city is in an interesting, if we can call it that, an interesting time where we have a lot going on. Um, but I don't think that means that we should be blind to what's happening to our animals, right? Um, because we also have a lot of families that are taking care of animals that aren't able to take care of animals. And, you know, I feel like, um, we should just do our best to help everyone that we can. Um, so that's kind of my piece on that. And secondly, I just wanted to say this is the first city council meeting that I've actually been able to get through to the end of. Um, and I just want to give my respects and my appreciation to all the other callers who have spoken up and really have, are fighting for the city, right? Fighting for our, you know, our interests, for our well-being, for our growth and our development. Um, so I appreciate your time very much. Thank you for giving me the opportunity to talk to you.
Thank you. Um, Councilwoman Vaughn, could you give me the next?
Yeah, the next one is Danielle Glito.
Go right ahead, Danielle.
Good evening, Council. My name is Danielle Glito. I am a resident of Ewing, New Jersey, and I'm sure many of you know I'm the founder and executive director of Trenton Animals Rock. Uh, to say I'm heartbroken and disappointed tonight would be a giant understatement. Um, and as I was listening to all the comments, and I want to assure you I was listening to all of them, I took notes and thought to myself, I could go point by point and explain what is accurate versus what is inaccurate. I could tell you what the shelter was like when I came in there four years ago, when Ms. Thaxton had been gone already for quite some time. So the picture that was painted was very different when I came in. Or I could really just speak from my heart, which is what I'm going to do. I haven't met many of you on the council, and I hope to. I hope that you will come into the shelter and talk with me and talk with our team about the work that we are doing and what work you would like to see us doing. I'd like to sit down with you and talk about what you think is a feasible budget for the city of Trenton. Because I can assure you that as somebody who has spent the last fifteen years of her life dedicated to raising millions of dollars to help children and young adults who have experienced the trauma of foster care, I care about people. I care about people. I care about your city. And even though some of you may not believe this, I care about all of you. I didn't start Trenton Animals Rock just for dogs and cats. I started it because I saw a struggling system and believed that I could infuse some change and innovation and resources outside of the city. To that end, we have raised over half a million dollars just in the last year and a half to not only help save the lives of those dogs and cats that enter your shelter, but those dogs and cats that are the pets, some of them trusted and loving soul companions for seniors, those struggling with mental health issues. And I can assure you that every time a Trenton resident walks through those doors, if they can't afford an adoption fee, or even more, if they need training for their pet, or they need medical attention, we are there. I cannot stress enough that before everything in this world, I am a human being and a mom, and I look at every single life that I touch like, how can I help this life be better? So I'm inviting all of you in this public comment that instead of us just debating what bills were paid, what vets were doing, what ACOs were doing, what TAR doesn't do, one, I can assure you, we have all the proper health certifications required by the New Jersey Department of Health and the city of Trenton. But I would ask that we come together and sit down and figure this out. This is a city problem. This is also about the people, and I genuinely care. And I don't know if Robyn's smiling and laughing because she feels me or because she thinks what I'm saying is amusing. Get to know me, please, because I am the face of this organization, and I realize I do these live videos, and it's genuinely because I care. And I'm happy to meet you face to face. Sit down and let's talk about what budget works for the city. What money do you think the city should and can do, and what do you want us to do with it? And what do you want us to come to the table with? Because I want to fix this problem. That is what I came here to do. I don't have to do this. Nobody's, this cash cow comment that was made just blew my mind. Nobody is making money on what is happening in our city, especially with that animal shelter. It is run by two shelter managers, one of which is a resident of that city. Our head animal care coordinator is a resident of that city. When I tell you that if you sat and met these people, just like if you sat and met with me, you would see the heart, that it is about so much more than just saving animals' lives. It is really about being a resource for your community. Can we get more dogs microchipped? Can we educate people about leash laws? Can we educate people about why vaccinations are important and how they can save lives? Can we help our homebound seniors who can't get their animals veterinary care but love them dearly and are sometimes their lifeline? Those are the things that Trenton Animals Rock came in and set out to do. And anybody who's really ever met me or worked with me or worked with my team gets it. And 100%, I do cry. And I cry because I care. I cry because this matters to me so very much in the core of everything I do. I show up because life is short, and I am going to help every single human being and every single living and breathing being I can while I am here. And that may sound cheesy, and that may sound over the top, but I honestly don't care. What I care about is, tell me what you all want us to do and how we can do it together, and let's work on this problem because it is bigger than animals. It is not about people versus animals. It is about coming together and finding resources that work for this city. And that is a person, I am a person who can help you do that and who could find you more resources to do that. So instead of fighting me, use me. I am not trying to fight you. I have a lot of respect for the work every single one of you sets out to do every day. I don't pretend to know what that is. So I am asking you tonight, contact us tomorrow. Let's sit down and let's figure this thing out. Let's keep this a no-kill shelter. Let's keep this an open-door resource for the residents of your community. Let's keep that pet pantry open. Let's make this microchip event happen. Let's make sure that all those dogs that wander in, all those dogs that are broken and fighting for their lives, all those cats that come in that need surgeries that we helped to pay for, who used to be sitting in a closet, by the way, before we came in, let's make sure they all get a chance. And, and like I said, at the end of the day, for me, I didn't come in there to save animals. I came in there to be a resource. I'm sitting right now in my home with a dog I took home from the shelter. Her name is Evie. She was picked up by animal control as a stray with another dog. She is beyond sweet. She can, she's limping. She could barely walk on one. She has some issue with one side of her body. She is so overbred. The city needs a safe breeding ordinance, not a no-breeding ordinance, a safe breeding ordinance, which educate people about how we can do this safely. This dog is getting a restful night's sleep tonight. She's, she's happy. She's peaceful. I, I feel like we can do more of this and we can do it together. So I'm starting to ramble because I know I'm getting very emotional. I'm not going to go point by point, even though I can, on all the other comments that were made that were inaccurate. I think the important part is moving forward, coming together and figuring out how to make this work, and I am 100% all for it. So I hope you all are too. Thank you for giving me the opportunity to speak. Thank you for welcoming me into your city. I love your city. And I try very hard to do as much as I can, not just for the animals, but for the people. And for those of you who know one simple wish, you know that we are always there. Um, and I hope that you will use me as a resource. And again, just, I hope you will come to the table with us and figure out how we can make this work. Uh, I, I thank you from the bottom of my heart for listening to me tonight and to everybody who's shown up to speak either on our behalf or to give constructive criticism. We're all in this world together, man. We really, we really should be coming together. Have a good night.
Thank you. Councilwoman Vaughn, the next person, please.
This is Cheryl Covington.
Go right ahead, Ms. Covington.
Okay, hello, one minute. Hello. Hi, everyone. I must say that tonight was a very blessed and a good meeting tonight, and I'm glad to be on the floor. And I have a few things that I just want to address because I, Cheryl Covington, am a gunshot victim within the city of Trenton. I covered three kids on Hawkman Avenue, August 5th, 2012. I have a bullet in my shoulder. I don't know if you can see it. Uh, but it's there. A bullet in my shoulder, a bullet in my back, a right collapsed lung, pins and rods in my right ankle, all because the drug dealer boys out west Trenton and was beefing with another side of town came out there shooting in the crowds, August 5th, 2012. There's a police report. And when I say my heart is saddened, my heart is saddened because if you've never had a metal entered into your body and had that burning sensation, because some people don't know how that feel, but I know how that feel. When you get shot, that is like a bullet, a metal thing, fast, traveling inside your body, entering your cells, entering your body. And it's just painful, it's hurtful, and then your life flashes, in and out, in and out. You go through different stages. That's very true when they say that your body goes through different stages. I was not born into the city of Trenton from my mother and my father, but any bullets inside of me. But God has a purpose. And when I say that God is an awesome God, God is an awesome God because that right there felt like hot lava erupting, like a volcano. You see it on TV, and it's like, okay, it's something real hot, like when you see it in Hawaii, going down and burning up. But when you got that bullet inside of you and it's coming out of you and it's burning and blood, and you don't know, you've never been shot before, you got police officers. It doesn't matter, Trenton, you're the whole world. Police officers that never been shot, been on the force for over thirty and forty-five years. It saddens my soul how the kids are getting shot. Little kids cannot defend themselves. I cover three kids, one three and five years old. I'm telling you, it saddens me. It's too much, when there's too much gunshots going on, it's too much going on within the city of Trenton. I'm going to speak on the violence, the gunshots. It's just too much. But I'm going to say again, but when you got police officers sitting in predominantly black communities, meaning Stevenson, Baldnut, and all of other areas, just sitting there, getting a paycheck, funds. I hear a lot of what's going on about funds. I'm talking about the Trenton police officers sitting in cars. Back in the days, I'm 44. I'm from West Trenton all day long, Redford, Rosemont, Stevenson. And when I say, like another gentleman said, we had community outreach. We had the mini station, wait there on the corner of Hawkman. Cave and all of them cave out. They showed us love. Right now, the kids do not feel as if they have love. They are scared. And I'm in the community. I'm in the city of Trenton. I move around. I've got very disabled, looks to be deceiving. But when I say the kids are scared, the kids are scared, their parents are scared, I'm scared, and I'm a gunshot victim. And then when you got the Trenton police officers that come out to you, they don't know what's going on to you. Trenton police officers are trained, you know, to protect and serve all. But you can never look at a person that, you can look at me, you wouldn't even know that I got those bullets in me. But it's factual, and I thank God for Hella Field Trauma Center. I thank God for Trenton EMTs, and I thank God for those officers that did come out rapidly, because you know why? The Trenton Police Department got fifty over fifty-one phone calls in less than five seconds when I got shot. That's what saved my life. The community did. West Trenton community saved my life. Now you got the community that's scared of the police. You know why? Because it's the way you treat people. It's different cultures. It's different religions. It's different ethnicities. Nobody is the same. Each one, protect all, serve all. When you do that, you can't use no bias. And then when you come up to a person, it's the way how you talk to a person. Because if you talk to a person nasty and whatever, I'm just saying how the Trenton, now I'm going back to the Trenton police, how they come up to you and they are just so nasty, they come up to you. On my street, I'm in Joseph Harrison Award, and I must say that Joseph Harrison has been doing his thing. Yes, he has. He's been donating food. I know Marge Caldwell-Wilson. I see her doing things. I see Kathy McBride out there. I see a lot of things because I'm in the city. And the ones that I don't see, I follow up on you like I do right now, and I continue on. I do a lot with the citizens, especially the disabled and residents of Kingsbury Twin Towers. I literally saw my neighbor die in front of me on the fifteenth floor in Kingsbury. I had been incarcerated, came home, saw people die in there, people killed. But when I'm telling you, I was better off when I was locked up inside of Mercer County Correctional Center, because you know why? They would take care of you and they treat you with respect. See, respect is due to a dog. And nobody, even though you got that uniform on, even though that person has been in trouble before, it's the way that you correspond with a person. And the Trenton Police Department needs more training, more training, because what happened when I seen that, see, when gun, let me tell you what happens with gunshot victims, because I'm one, and I'm speaking for all of us. That right there will stick with you for the rest of your life, the rest. You wonder, why am I here? Because everybody else is getting shot. Everybody's getting killed. Then you got to have leaders, and I'm talking about leaders. We voted you into office. Know why we voted you into office? Because we trusted that you cared and you would do what is right. Now, what I'm telling you what is not right is how in the Trenton Police Department, you have an officer, and I'm not going to call his name, but on his left little shoulder right here, he got a big swastika tattoo. Yes. And I'm telling you, because I stay in the 400 block of Franklin Street, and I'm, I'm the only African American within the 400 block. And I'm speaking because I'm hurting right now. But I have been called every type of name from Black Monkey, Black Punter, the N-word, everything. The police are not patrolling the streets. You know why? Because they were at Cheryl Covington's house. I got videos. I have ADT security cameras that show the police officer. Cheryl Covington don't have no warrants. Run it for over seventeen years, but I can show you your officers. I can send it to your emails and everything, how the Trenton Police Department kept coming and did open requests too down at the city clerk's office, because I'm very educated. I have the police officers at Cheryl Covington's house over three hundred and fifty times, three hundred and fifty times within six months at my house. Now, mind you, keep in mind, no warrants. Okay, if you got training, if you don't, it's called, you don't have no warrants, you are supposed to tell them, go down to the municipal court and press the complaint. But when you got officers telling you, why don't you just move? I have disability handicap signs put in front of my house from the city of Trenton. And do you know the Trenton police officers came to my house for a neighbor that was not disabled? No pins, no rods, no bullets, no collapsed lung, no nothing. They told me to move my car. They also told me that I should move off this block, because see, I live on Franklin Street. Back in the days, I'm 44, African Americans and Spanish could not walk through this street, and that is facts. It hurts my soul because I had to go look at Kingsbury. I rushed down Kingsbury when I heard that the little girl got shot because they would not release an aid. I have godkids down there. I have family members down there. I have friends down there. I have disabled people down there that I advocate for down there. I may be disabled, but this is probably why God kept me here for. But I'm telling you, we got to do better when it comes to policing, and I'm down with the other gentlemen. Sometimes you got to select a community. We have to see you guys, not just coming out for a photo op, not just coming down, you know, just to take a picture. Come out. I see Joe Harrison, Joe Harrison's all around out here. I sees him. I literally walk up to him, hey, Joe, walk up, and he's like, hey, Marge. You know, I see them. So when they call, someone calls their name, I know who they are. I got other people that's on council. I don't even know who you are. That's sad. When the back in the days, in the eighties and the nineties, I was Stevenson and the whole, all wards. Because I feel as if, even though you are councilman or councilwoman for a certain ward, you still serve all people, all people. You don't just serve that ward. That's where it gets really messed up. I don't serve that ward. No. I don't serve that ward, no. If a citizen reaches out to you, because it's a majority of people that do not know how to read or write in the city of Trenton. I know, because I assist them. It hurts my soul as a gunshot victim. Here in the city of Trenton, here that I was an innocent bystander, had nothing to do with shielded kids, bullet in my back, 45 millimeter gun. And the charges got dismissed against the shooter. Ballistics came back and everything that it was the gun from the Mercer County Prosecutor Office. And know why all the charges got dismissed? Because Trenton Police Department did a legal search and seizure. Then when they could come out to your house and harass you, get off the block, move, move your handicap, move from your handicap sign, I called and I emailed all of you. I swear, and I feel like crying. Because you never know what a person is going through. And I'm telling you, it's very hurtful when you reach out to people and you can't get no help. It is. It's very hurtful as a gunshot victim. The Mercer County Victim Pride Conversation, they don't, they don't give the gunshot victims that much. You only get 2,500 for relocation. And then at a funeral, you only get that amount to bury someone. As far as mental health, shoot, transport department, municipal court, you can't even go get a women's space counselor in there. And that's part of your constitutional rights as a domestic violence victim. It's called the domestic violence act. But I just want to say, I'm sorry, but I just want to say, it's about unity. It's not about this one, that one, that one. Just come together for the city. Because it's not even summertime yet. And count the bodies. Every time you hear shooting, the kids are crying and everything. I just want to leave you guys on that. Think about the children and think about the kids. Be more inactive, be active within the community. And please do something with the Trenton Police Department. Thank you all.
Go ahead and move to the next person.
Amanda?
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes.
Yes, we can.
Yes, I'm here, can you hear me? Hi, my name is Amanda Todi. I, thank you. My name is Amanda Todi. I am a resident of Plainsboro, but I work in Trenton and I'm a volunteer at Trenton Animals Rock. And I just wanted to voice my support in favor of them. What they do for the community, they have a lot of resources for residents. As was already said, the pet pantry, anyone can go to the Trenton Animals Rock and get dog food if they're not able to afford dog food or cat food for their pet. They have free microchipping. If an animal gets out and is, God forbid, hit by a car, they pay for the veterinary services so that when the families come to get their animal, their animal is being cared for, not just put into the kennel with broken bones and made to sit there for seven days. They work hands in hand with the animal control officers that work for the city. And the animal control officers, quite frankly, just do not have the time to take care of all the animals. They're very busy going out into the city and picking up the animals, taking the calls, taking the dogs and cats off the street. Frankly, without Trenton Animals Rock, there's no one to care for the animals during the day because the animal control officers just don't have the resources. And I think you really should consider working with them and extending the contracts to help them, help the residents of the city and help them provide all of the different resources they have for the residents that help them take care of their animals, learn how to take care of their animals better, how to train them and really just make sure that everyone has the information and resources that they need to responsibly take care of their dogs and cats and not be breeders and let them out in the street. I think it's really important, especially with this, with the pending Senate legislation that Ms. Randall spoke about, where people might be able to just drop their dogs and cats off at any public facility and they have to take them in, no questions asked. I think that is really going to be an issue that's going to present a problem in the future. And I think that's something that Trenton Animals Rock would be able to really help the animal control officers of the city with. Thank you.
Thank you. Good, next person, councilwoman.
Yes, the next person is Daphne.
Go right ahead, Daphne.
Oh, hi, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Great, this is Daphne Klevenoff, a resident of Lawrenceville. But I worked at the college in Trenton and I volunteer for, in an organization that provides services to, to the city of Trenton. So I do have an allegiance there. And I have to say that the bill by council not to renew the contract, TAR's contract, is beyond disappointing. The public won't allow the shelter to return to a high kill shelter.
I've been waiting on this phone a long time.
Somebody's speaking other than me, but the public won't allow the shelter to return to a high kill shelter and be run by the city. So the animals will be easily euthanized, forced to live in deplorable conditions and not receiving the medical care and love they so deserve. TAR is one of the few bright spots in the city and they truly care about the residents of the city. Danielle gave such an impassioned plea, you know, asking for the council to come and visit the shelter. And I think if you do that and even check out their Facebook page, you'll see, TAR doesn't do this work for the money. Nobody's getting ripped off the sad, depressing, but also rewarding work. They do this for the love they have for the animals and for the residents of Trenton. Please, those who question what's going on at the shelter, visit the shelter, visit the animals. Have an open dialogue with TAR. I think they're owed at least that much. You will see for yourselves the hardworking, dedicated people that work and volunteer there. You won't, you can't ask for a better group of people. Volunteers who are walking the animals, you know, before like tornadoes and before hurricanes to make sure that the animals are getting the care that they need. I, I don't think you can say that animal control will do this or city employees have even the time or the resources to do this. Uh, thank you for allowing me to speak.
Thank you. Councilwoman Vaughn, there's a person that's on the phone. Sir, can you state your name? Can you state your name, young man?
I've been on the phone hours and change waiting.
Sir, can you state your name?
Stephen Marine.
Okay, sir, go ahead and speak.
Okay. First of all, I want to talk about the ticketing that's going on between Chambers Street and Rowland. I live 828 Chambers Street. I've been living there for six years. Since I've been there, there've been over 100 accidents between Liberty Street and Rowland Avenue. The citizens have to park their car on the sidewalk to avoid being getting hit from traffic coming down Chambers Street. There are about six bars located in that area within a mile. Residents get drunk, drop their cars and hit our cars on Chambers Street. My car has been hit five different times on Chambers Street. I had to replace a mirror four different times. All the residents, if you ride down Chambers Street, you will see that we have to park our car on the sidewalk. Recently, a new ticket person was starting the job and she gave tickets out to the people parked on the sidewalk. I have to go to court now for this issue. What do we do if we can't park on the street without our cars getting hit? My second issue is piggybacking on something that Robin Vaughn said. If there was a company that you hired or gave a grant or a fund to, and it's been since 2000, which makes that 12 years, and they have not provided the service, why would you get in bed with this company again? This company should have been crossed off the list a long time ago. Robin Vaughn, I do respect the work you do when it comes to following the money. I wish that you would have a city audit. Have someone come in and look at every department books. I'm sure you'll find there's been a lot of stealing going on in every department for over 20 years. This has not just started happening. Do a city audit. You will find so much dirt, so much deceit in our government. Far as the policing goes, I don't know how big Newark is, but for a whole year, not one officer serviced their weapon, let off their weapon or shot somebody for one whole year. I don't understand why that can't be Trenton, being that we're only six miles. Trenton has been dealing with jump out boys for years. It goes back to Officer McDonough, Officer Girmann. Trenton police have been breaking the law for years. But we have a judicial system and a court system that turns a naked eye to it. From when the police used to go and erect them to do illegal searches, to the police pulling us over for no reason, for the police harassing individuals just because of their color. Me and Kathy McBride don't agree on a lot of things, but I agree with one thing she said. In four, in two years, we've had over 80 murders in our cities. In two years, we've had over 80 murders in our city. Now imagine if those people that got killed were white. There is no way that our judicial system would allow this to happen. If the system would start policing the police, you would have a better police department. There's been many people coming for this director position in a police department. I have not seen any changes with all the new people that you brought in. There's one qualified individual that y'all keep ignoring, but we keep having the same problems. I am advocating today for John Day, ex-lieutenant state trooper, to be our police director. He's black, he's from our community and he knows the people. What you guys have now in place is not working. Now, when Kathy McBride first opened up this meeting, she asked every council member to please address these situations with respect. Mr. Day used to came on to speak, but was disrespected by members on this panel once again. As a citizen of this city, I do not like what I see coming from the council. Who raised y'all? Didn't your mother teach you respect when you was first born, when, as a child? Did she teach you to respect people? This council doesn't respect anyone. And that's why trickle downs from city hall to every department in our city, there's no respect. We can do better, y'all. Thank you.
The next person, uh, Ms. Vaughn, is there another person?
Uh, nope.
Okay.
Oh, there's one, I'm sorry, Cheryl, Cheryl Snyder.
Ms. Snyder, go right ahead.
Tatiana Allen wants to speak as well.
I thought she already spoke.
We called her, but we'll call, we'll come back to her.
We'll come back to her.
Let Ms., let, Ms. Snyder is being recognized. Ms. Snyder? Ms. Snyder, are you there? Well, go right ahead, go to Tatiana. And then we'll come back.
Hi, my name is Tatiana Allen.
Go right ahead.
I wanted to, can you guys hear me?
Yes, we can, go right ahead.
Okay. I wanted to invite all of you city council members to our community center located at 601 North Clinton Ave, Trenton, New Jersey. And I hope to see you guys at the East Trenton Center.
Thank you.
Uh, Cheryl Snyder? Elizabeth?
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Hello?
Go right ahead, Ms. Snyder.
Hi, my name is Elizabeth Johnson. Oh, uh, it's Elizabeth, I'm sorry.
Okay.
Hi, my name is Elizabeth Johnson. I'm actually a resident of Borden Town. Um, sorry, I'm very nervous. I know I'm not a resident of Trenton, but I did grow up there. My mother grew up there, my father grew up there, my grandparents grew up there, their parents grew up there. Um, and I don't think that you have to be a resident to care. Um, I want to speak on behalf of the animal shelter. I have a standing monthly donation towards the shelter, so I'm putting my money where my mouth is. On social media, I see the dogs that come in and out on a daily basis. I see the dogs that get adopted and the loving way that the leaders interact with these animals. I want to offer a few statistics from the Michigan State University Animal Legal and Historical Center. 100% of sexual homicide offenders examined had a history of cruelty towards animals. 70% of all animal abusers have committed at least one other criminal offense and almost 40% have committed violent crimes against people. 63% of men who have committed crimes of aggression admitted to cruelty towards animals. 48% of rapists and 30% of child molesters reported committing animal abuse during childhood or adolescence. Men who abuse animals were five times more likely to have been arrested for violence towards humans, four times more likely to have committed property crimes, and three times more likely to have records for drugs and disorderly conduct offenses. Given this information, I have to imagine that a properly run shelter can also offer a lot of insight for the city and the problems that are happening in the city. I just have a few questions for the city to consider. Is there a better solution in the absence of the group that's currently running the shelter? Will the city answer honestly what will happen to these animals? Will the representatives be able to comfortably say, we will now be killing the stray animals that come into the care of the city? All I ask is the city do their due diligence before they go back to just killing the animals. Visit the shelter, talk to the people, analyze and review their work. Don't base your decisions on anecdotal, anecdotal evidence. I know that there's an endless issues in the city after listening to this call. But I definitely believe that Trenton can do more than one thing at a time. And that's all I have to say, thank you.
Uh, I'm going to go back to Cheryl Snyder. Are you, are you able to unmute yourself? Cheryl Snyder. Okay, um, there she is.
Go right ahead, Ms. Snyder. Ms. Snyder?
Okay, I guess her phone's not working. The next one is Dr. Tammy Duffy. Dr. Tammy Duffy.
Yes, can you hear me? Good morning, or good afternoon, sorry. Good afternoon or good evening. Um, thank you for letting me speak. I've been a resident of Trenton. I live in Hamilton, but grew up in Trenton. And I've been taking care of a beautiful garden on the corner of North Clinton and Lawrence for eight years for the city. I'm a volunteer at the Trenton Animal Shelter. And I raised my hand about concerns that I saw and experienced. I'm also an ACO in the state of New Jersey. There is no doubt that Trenton Animal Rocks, in the time that they've been here, have done some heroic efforts in raising money, getting care for the animals and moving the animals out of the shelter. There's no doubt. However, there is not the passion and focus that is needed to manage the shelter in that same level as it pertains to shelter management and focusing on what needs to be done. The numerous videos that have been posted by the TAR organization themselves demonstrated recently an inspection that happened at the shelter. They held up the inspection report. In the video, you could clearly see the inspection of the shelter demonstrated from the state, a conditional B inspection report. That's not a good result. The levels go from satisfactory, conditional A, conditional B, and then to unsatisfactory. Keeping the shelter running within the regulatory limits is extremely important and that can't be overlooked. As a community, I applaud the people who also raised their hands. I've written things to the TAR board. I'm still waiting for a response from them about my concerns. As a community, we can rally to make sure and work together. There is a plethora of talent and people who love animals. Stop the drama. Stop the drama, stop the, the Facebook video performances, and focus one thousand percent on the animals and making it right for everyone in the community and keeping it safe. The ACOs prior to T.A.R. coming in, because I've been volunteering prior to T.A.R.'s existence, when I went in there and I said to the ACOs, "Which dogs could I take out and walk?", they would tell me. There was never an issue. Today, and I flat out said this to the T.A.R. board, I pulled back on the hours that I was volunteering at the shelter because I didn't feel safe, that there was a lack of judgment about the animals' behavior. That's important. Being able to understand what those animals can or can't do is really important, not just for the volunteers, but for people who come for meet and greets, et cetera. Let's everybody rally together, help the ACOs who will now be running the shelter, because those guys are amazing. Jose Muniz is an amazing individual for the city of Trenton. And you have a bunch of new ACOs who have just graduated from ACO school as well. Let's rally. Next week is actually National ACO Week. Embrace them, absolutely embrace them, and let's everybody work together. And all this drama has got to stop, it's not good for anybody. It's draining for everyone. So I thank you for letting me speak. I'm sure I'll get hate mail from some people, but I feel better speaking because I applaud the council for really taking a look at, what do we want to spend, what do we want to do? And let's get the right situation, but make sure the ACOs get what they need. Okay? Thank you, and have a very nice evening.
Thank you. So we're gonna, um, have to wrap this up. Um, we have the, um, the, uh, civic comments, and then we have, um, our clerk that has to get back. So we're gonna wrap up the public comment this evening. Um, I'm making a motion to close public comment. Second. All in favor?
Aye.
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 So, um, now we'll move on into the civic comment. Um, remember, Paul Wilson.
Yes, good evening, everybody, and I do appreciate everyone coming out. The dialogue was great tonight. Um, of course, I'm very upset about the, um, the contract not being renewed for T.A.R.'s, but I agree with Danielle that this council, some of the council have to come to the table. And you just can't shut something down, you have to have a plan. Tell me what your plan is. Maybe we can work this out and make this shelter, um, a shining star in the state of New Jersey. Um, three hundred thousand dollars is nothing compared to the millions of dollars that we paid out in this city every meeting. We approve all these contracts, we approve all these grants, we approve loans, we pay lawsuits, and trust me, you can't regret it. If you go back, take ten steps back, you're going to put the burden on the animal control officers that have to go out in the streets to also run the office. So I, I just would ask you to think about this and reconsider, and let's come to the table and work this out for, for the, uh, for the shelter. Because as I've always said, this is not just about the animals, this is about the community. This is about health issues. This is about a, 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 putting people's animals down that don't get to the shelter in time to retrieve them if they get out loose. You know, this is, this, there's, there are hundreds of people in this city that own animals and love animals, and they need, need the help of the shelter for vaccination purposes and all of that. So I just would ask you all to reconsider, and, and I have nothing more to offer. Good night, everybody, thank you.
Thank you. Councilman Harrison?
Um, I would like to say, um, the West Trenton Community Center, Sharon. Um, every Saturday, eight to noon, they do wonderful things, helping out people in the community, giving out food. Um, this Sunday, the T.A.R. Foundation, they have a carnival, uh, from twelve to three P.M. That's, uh, Latino Merchants, 375 Morris Avenue. Um, if you come out, they have, uh, things for the kids. It's a wonderful day, please come out. Um, I agree with Councilman Paul Wilson, the T.A.R. does a wonderful for the city. I, I think there was some steak. Um, I would like to thank the Fire Department, Director Douglas, Brian Blakely, Claire's Heart, um, all the great work that they did at the Stuyvesant Avenue, Hamilton Avenue, and Calhoun Street Fire Department, giving out socks, hats, gloves, helping out people in need. Um, I'd like to thank Cheryl Covington because she's right. At the end of the day, we gotta work in the community. And she's right, we gotta get out there and get the work done. Um, and, um, I'd like to invite all my colleagues, as you can well see, I'm sitting in the chambers. Um, I'd like to invite my colleagues on the nineteenth, to come here, the public, come here on the nineteenth, um, the chambers, come here in person, it should be in person. Um, the legis, the state legislator has returned and pressed to person. This council needs to do the same, we need to be in the main chambers. Um, and I'd like to wrap it up, I'd like to wish my mom a happy birthday. Mom, thank you for everything you do for the family. Uh, you're special. Thank you, and I love you.
Councilman Mouchau?
Yes, thank you. The only thing I really want to say is, I heard a lot of chatter about the police department and everything. Uh, I believe if you get the facts and get the facts right, you might change your attitudes, what you're doing. There should be a committee out there, and it should be open to the public, uh, that they can answer all questions for you, that I'd like to see. Any questions regarding the shootings or anything about police, I'm going to see if I can get something done for that. Instead, I just see a lot of misleading quotes, a lot of misleading information, and, uh, I'd like to see it changed. Thank you very much, have a good night.
Thank you. Councilman Rodriguez?
Uh, no comments.
Councilwoman Vaughn?
Uh, yes, um, I just, let me make it real short about the animal shelter. I just think it's, um, I, you know, I, I'm virtually, folks came here and said Derek called that we rejected the, the contract with the animal shelter. Let's just be clear here. The animal shelter, uh, is, is the Trenton Animal Shelter. It belongs in the Department of Health and Human Services, is a government service. It's fully funded by the taxpayers', uh, taxpayer dollars. And no one has more money than taxpayer dollars. Uh, so I just want, uh, T.A.R.'s to know, thank you very much for your service. Um, Trenton is going in another direction. One of the, uh, and we much prefer to, um, keep the service in-house, at least from my perspective, and some of my other, uh, residents have shared the same. I just want to share an email that I got from, I want to share two emails, two emails that I got from, uh, West Ward residents. It said, uh, I won't, uh, I'll just redact the name, I won't say who it was. It says, "I am not in support of the city renewing the contract with Trenton Animal Rocks. As a city resident, I believe our shelter should be run by Trenton employees. I found the people there not to be too friendly. I am so tired of them, I'm tired of seeing them beg for money all, all the time." That's one from a resident of the city of Trenton. Here's a second one. This person says, "I see that T.A.R.'s is up to be, uh, I see, I see that T.A.R.'s is up to be in charge of the Trenton Animals Shelter, once again for contract renewal. I can tell you, I highly oppose this. They have no disease program in place. On top of that, the director is constantly on Facebook touting the work that they do. They only do what they feel like doing when the mood strikes where there are witnesses. I know many people that have volunteered there and have left because of her and her paid staff bullying people." So, I mean, these are comments that I've gotten. And as far as me coming down to the shelter, I can do that. But, you know, my business is on council. Uh, if, if Dr. Lopez, who runs the Department of Health and Human Services, needs the council support, any way to help her run that shelter, the taxpayers have given her the obligation to do that. So there's not one vendor who can come here and tell the council what they need to do. We take instructions from our, uh, because, uh, the residents and taxpayers of the city, and the residents and taxpayers of the city through our mayor have, uh, have, uh, have, uh, given advice and consent to a competent and qualified, uh, Health and Human Service Director who is, she should go and look at that animal shelter and make sure that, um, uh, things are running, uh, to, to, to standard and meet regulatory compliance. And if she hasn't, uh, uh, have come to this council and said anything about that her division is not functioning well. So I believe in that at this point, three hundred seventy-five thousand dollars, we need to invest in the infrastructure of the animal shelter. We need to invest in, uh, hiring, uh, full-time, long-term employees of the city. Uh, and, um, that's what, uh, that's the approach that I would like to see. Um, we cannot continue with this instability around, uh, contracts. Uh, renewing contracts year after year after year. Um, we need to start training, uh, training and hiring professionals who have, or are licensed and, and will, uh, return taxpayer investments, um, over time. Uh, you know, long-term strategy, ten, fifteen, twenty years. And the consistency in that training will deliver, uh, the, on dividends. So, uh, we're looking to go that route. And, um, I'll talk to, uh, I'll have conversations with Dr. Lopez on that. Um, that's what I'm going to say about the animal shelter. The, the thing that I wanted to talk about, and I just, I, I mean, all I can say is, many of the people do not live in Trenton. It appears to be living in a parallel universe that I have no insight to. I mean, I can't walk around and think about animals when people are dying and I, and gunshots are flying all over my neighborhood, and police are running roughshod and just, uh, feeling that they can do anything they want in this city. Um, uh, you know, sons and daughters, mothers and fathers cannot even go outside without, and if, without, without being in fear of their lives. We had a, a nine-year-old, uh, killed by gun violence. We have a twenty-nine-year-old young man paralyzed from the chest down, and not one of yous, one of yous, said anything about that. Show no compassion for the struggle that we are experiencing here in the city of Trenton. No one is challenging our government, the police of all entities. The, uh, the policing, the prosecatory, the prosecutorial misconduct, the judiciary. No one is challenging those entities that are responsible for what's going on in these streets, are responsible for not, uh, 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 forming their duties to expectation. Their duty is to ensure that justice, that people get due process, that people, um, that people are treated fairly, lawfully, and without prejudice. You can't profile people, people are free, this is democracy. You can't go around pulling your gun and, and, and determining being judge, jury, and executioner. Police officer's job is only, their job is only to arrest. They are not supposed to, uh, inflict the penalty too. And, and you don't even hear from the mayor, from Police Director Wilson, no matter what, how much they say that they communicate. We still have not heard from Mr. Honorfree on the charges of the police, the four police officers that, that shot and maimed, uh, Joanne Henderson. But we don't need to know? We need to know, are they on leave, are they on paid leave? And when, and when did they go on leave? When, when did those four police officers go on leave? When will Angelo Honorfree charge them? He has charged Joanne Henderson, he charged him, and then had to drop those charges, I believe, when he could not substantiate them after seeing the video. No one would believe that a man who was shot four times, that was dragged, dragged out of the car, and everybody could see that, he was already paralyzed, coming out of the car. So these are the manufactured charges that the police officers and our prosecutors, uh, you know, construct and manufacture to, um, support a certain narrative so that when they go into, uh, the, the courts, you know, the, the judiciary will then apply certain sentences, you know, the peanut, the really, you know, the, the sentences, ten, fifteen, twenty-five years, um, for, um, for things that, you know, uh, these, these individuals just did not do. So there should be consequences to this, and then we, the people, have to hold them accountable. And it's just appalling that many citizens in our city has, 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 have chosen to turn a blind eye, have chosen to speak and say, uh, and, uh, have refused to hold these individuals accountable. Uh, Mayor Gus Yor, uh, Stephen Wilson, the police director, Angelo Honorfree, the prosecutor, Internal Affairs Manager Guy Ponte Chella. These are the individuals that control the streets, that have impact, that can change the trajectory, that can transform the police department, that can change, um, can get training of our officers, can get the proper supervision of these officers, can get the proper discipline of these officers when they commit crimes or, um, or exercise misconduct. To turn the blind eye and not even have these officers charged when you shoot somebody irresponsibly four times and the person did nothing. And we are supposed to say, I'm supposed to say, as an elected official, it's okay, and I'm going to remain silent and I'm not going to respond? It is my duty, my fiduciary responsibility to the city to respond and to hold my, uh, um, my colleagues accountable. And I will continue to call for their resignations, and we want to replace them with competent, uh, uh, competent elected officials, competent law enforcement professionals, competent prosecutors, competent, competent police directors, competent law enforcement folks who can train, who can supervise, who can, who can, uh, discipline these officers fairly and justly. Not officers who are, who support the corruption, who support the unlawfulness. Because many of those officers are criminals themselves. They're criminals themselves. When you're out there murdering people, you're, you're a criminal yourself, and you need to be held accountable, and you need to be in jail. So I will go to my mayor and ask, Gus Yor, I will go to Prosecutor Honorfree, ask, where, where is the information, the report on the status of these officers? When are you going to bring them to justice? When are you going to charge them? And I will not stop until that is done. And I will ask, uh, Governor Murphy and the Attorney General to do their jobs as well. They, they should come into Trenton, they should come into Mercer County and investigate the Trenton Police Department, and investigate that, uh, shooting of Joanne Henderson. Joanne, not only Joanne Henderson, but for Stephen Gussymore, for Joseph R., for Jason Williams. Get in here, investigate. Within two years, four people have been victims of police violence. So we need to hear from our law enforcement agencies and leaders. We need to hear from Governor Murphy, we need to hear from Matthew- We need to hear from Governor Murphy, we need to hear from Matthew Plackton, the Attorney General, we need to hear from Angelo Honorfree, we need to hear from the United States Department of Justice. We need them here in Trenton, in that police department, investigating and making some recommendations for transformation, making recommendations for them to be trained, to be supervised, to be disciplined before they put those men back on the street to continue to kill and maim Trentonians. And I don't want to hear from pastors who don't live here, or individuals who don't live here, who are not of our experience. This is our experience. You come to this council meeting and we're dying and you want to talk about some dogs. The city of Trenton will run its shelter. We have the professionals in place to do that, we don't need a contracting firm to do it. But what we do need is for our law enforcement agencies to get their butts in here, and if they're not going to do it, then we, the citizens, we, the elected officials, need to call for their resignations and vote them out of their seats and put people who will do the job. And it's always a good time to do it. It's always a good time to do it. Do not see Wilson needs to resign, Angelo Honorfree needs to resign, and Guy Ponciocello and that Internal Affairs Department need to resign. Thank you very much, Council President.
Thank you. Councilwoman Wilkins?
Yes, good evening, everyone. I'm not going to be before you long. I know that the meeting has been extensive. The sentiments I share with my colleague, Councilwoman Vaughn, there's some things that really need to change in this city. There's some things that are concerning the citizens, and as I heard the citizens speak tonight with regards to their experiences, it's concerning me. It's a great concern. But I want to thank you all for your attendance, your participation, and your words. Your voices do matter. Everyone's voice does matter in terms of the residents of this city. Like I said, I'm not going to be before you long, but I did want to thank you, continue to stay civically engaged, and have a great evening.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, and to all the directors that are on this call for coming and answering the questions for the public. I would also like to thank the public for being here, and I always tell you, your opinion matters, and I would like to thank my colleagues for being respectful this evening. I wanted to touch bases on two things. One is the, one is the procurement, and one of them is the police department. I want to touch bases on those two things this evening. So first of all, before these contracts come before the council, they should be vetted. We have a procurement officer that should vet these companies. We should not have to do the administration's work, because when it comes to us, it should be done. There should be memos attached, and if they are not vetted, they should not come. Mr. Delisle left the administration, and he said that they were doing all kinds of illegal things under the procurement laws. This just makes me think, where is DCA? Where's DCA when they allow the mayor to get waivers for a company to get over a half a million dollars from this city, and they're running a business out of a house? There is no business address. Where is DCA? Where is the fiscal monitors? The mayor put out an executive order to spend 8.6 million. I went to DCA five times trying to get them to address it. It took them almost two weeks to even come back and say to the mayor, these are not emergencies. 8.6 million. These are the things that the council should not have to do. We accepted a budget tonight. In the budget, we have to go through it because they have six people in two separate departments. These are things that shouldn't happen. They should come better prepared than they do. But nobody is asking the mayor and his team why they can't get it right. We shouldn't have to vote these things down because they should never come before us because they're not vetted. It's plain and simple as that. And then I want to move on to something Ms. Covington said. She said, "We need to, you guys need to get the police in check. We need to improve the police department." But yet and still, on Tuesday night, we had a resolution to bring the director in front of us to answer questions, and my colleagues wouldn't even allow him to answer the questions. And then you say, "Oh, I've seen them all around the community." Then you tell me in another sentence, "Oh, you guys should question the police." Well, when we tried to question the police, when we tried to make them accountable and transparent, we cannot do it without my colleagues' vote. They voted to table it rather than to make him come in front of the public and account for the reason, the main reason that they're talking about Jaquan Henderson, and the main reason that we're even talking about him now is because his family went and retained an attorney, they had a press conference with the NAACP, Larry Hamm, and the family, we would have not known. There is a serious violation here. A police shooting in the city, and you don't talk about it? The mayor said nothing to the public, the director said nothing to the public, the prosecutor, Prosecutor Honorfree said nothing, and did you not notice that it was never ran in the Trentonian? It was never ran in the Trenton Times? So, if the family hadn't reached outside of this county, if they had not reached outside the county, would we ever know about Jaquan Henderson? Would we even know about it? This in itself is a violation. When you have a police shooting, the Attorney General doesn't even release the video based on their own directives. They have a directive saying that the video had to be released within a certain time. That time was March the 4th. They didn't release the video until March the 19th or 18th. They didn't even follow their own directives. So, my question is to the public, when are you going to take this serious enough to make a change? I'm only one-seventh of a vote here. I have spent 35 years on the streets of Trenton trying to get the mothers to understand that we are living in an unhealthy environment. The quality of life here sucks, and we can change that. But I can't change it alone. Councilwoman Vaughn can't change it. Councilwoman Wilkins can't change it alone. The public have to stand up. You either stand for something, as my grandmother said, or you'll fall for anything. And right now, we are falling for anything when you allow a young man to be shot and nobody has to answer to it. When you allow 80 murdered young people to be murdered in the streets, and all they can come to you and say is, "It's not the police's fault because they didn't have the gun," well, you let me tell each and every one of you something. And I spoke to this the other night, and Fortune 500 companies, they hire the best. They pay the money to get the best. And when they don't perform the way that they should, they are out the door. We give our police department $37 million. That is the biggest portion of our budget, the police and the fire. If the director is not performing, if he cannot make a partnership with the ATF, because I spoke to this on Tuesday, the ATF is the alcohol, tobacco and firearms. That is what they do for a living. They come in and they partner with you, and they begin to track these guns. That is what they do. We should not have to tell him how to do his job if he's been here for 30 years and he said he knows the demographics, then he should be well-prepared to give us a reduction in crime. Nobody is saying that he has to eradicate it, we're saying, "Give us a reduction." We're saying that if one person less than those, if it had been 10 murders instead of 40, him and the mayor would be standing on the steps of the City Hall taking credit for the reduction. But now, since they've broken their own record, their own murder record, why can't they take responsibility for that? People, residents, I am only one-seventh of a vote. In order to make a difference in this city, you had better stand up and stand for something. And if you don't stand for your children's lives, then you fall for anything that they do to you, anything that they give you. Ms. Covington, if you don't stand up for your rights on that street, if the city police won't help you, then you step outside of the city and get you some help. If you keep going to the mayor and you can't get no help, and people are coming to you telling you you shouldn't live on that street, then there's a state NAACP. There's a state NAACP, got what I'm saying? I mixed my words, talking too much, I apologize. But what I'm saying to you, Mrs. Covington, is don't let anybody intimidate you, not the Trenton police or no one else. And as far as Mr. Stevenson, Mr. Steven Vereen, and living on Chambers Street, car being hit, that's something for the administration. The council can't do anything for you about that. The administration should address it. Public Works should address that. You shouldn't have a ticket, or you shouldn't be fixing a mirror on your car when you live on the street. These things should be addressed through administration. But you come to the council and you want the council to do the administration's job. The council's job is the budget, resolutions and ordinances. That's what we do. That is, those are part of our job description. Not to stop the ticket person from giving you a ticket, not to stop the police from intimidating you, but we will come and try to assist, but it's not a part of our job description. Trenton community, stand up. Stand up. Stand up. I appreciate all of you, and I thank you, and I thank you, Mrs. Carter. I know you have to get out. I'm going to ask, I'm going to make a motion to adjourn this meeting. Thank you.
Second. Second. Aye. Aye. All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. I thank each and every one of you. Mr. Rivera, you may end this call, end this meeting. Thank you.